I don't think I need this for talk about.
We're ready to get started. We're glad you're here. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Assistant County Manager Wendy Lang. A few preliminary matters. We have apologized for starting a bit late. We had a last minute, a last minute thing. But we're glad you're here. We are down one board member who is unable to be with us today, and we, we wish him well, Wes Rice. We are pleased that we have arrived at the moment when we can begin, well, not begin, where we can dig in deep into the stormwater issue and look at the extent of our situation and possible solutions. We, we feel this is a problem that impacts our whole community, and we're looking to the whole community to learn about it and to give us their thoughts and to help us grapple with this. We, before we begin, we'll have general public comment. If you are unable to be with us throughout the meeting, we will have public comments specific to this agenda item later. But if you are unable to be here for that public comment, we welcome you to share with us your ideas on stormwater during general public comment. Also, we will take public comment on any matters that are within our jurisdiction. And so we'll turn to public comment right now, a general public comment. You have three minutes. After two and a half minutes, there will be a beep and a yellow light, and after three minutes, there will be a red light. Yes, come on up. Welcome.
How's that? Okay. My name is Karen Peternell, and I'm a Douglas County resident. But I'm also the Carson City Stormwater Program Manager. But most importantly, I was the first. Oh, I'll take thirty or. Okay, great. Okay, again, Karen Peternell, Douglas County resident, but currently the Carson City Stormwater Program Manager. But I was the first Douglas County Stormwater Program Manager back in 2014, 2015, when we had all those alluvial fan flash floods in the Johnson Lane area. And I would have to go out to all the residents, and they would say, what is the county doing about this flooding? How are they going to prevent this flooding in the future? And I said, well, and echoing the words of Mahmoud Azad, the former county engineer, you know, if you're willing to pay just $5 a month towards a stormwater utility fee, you know, the cost of a hamburger per month, then we could start implementing infrastructure and have a really good program. And that didn't happen then, and it hasn't happened since then. But in Carson City, we have a very similar stormwater utility fee. We have about the same number of residents. And for about 20 years, we've been bringing in about $3 million a year. We'll look back at back in 2016, if we'd have implemented this stormwater utility then, we'd have $30 million. You know, that would have paid for the Johnson Lane basins. It wouldn't have had to be paid through litigation. We would actually have a fund. You have a great program here with Courtney and Jason and Katie and everybody. But they're so limited by being only able to do maintenance and minimal things. They need the money to be able to have a great stormwater program like we do at Carson City. You know, three weeks ago, we had really bad flooding on the east side of Carson City. And all the residents who have been complaining about the stormwater fee all these years, finally, they've had crews out there for the last three weeks working to clean them up. And so they finally recognize what the stormwater utility fee helps go for. So I urge you to not kick this can down the road, but to, but to pass a stormwater utility or some other funding mechanism. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Ms. Peternell. Is there any other general public comment?
Please, please come up.
Yeah, please come on up to the mic for public comment. Welcome.
Can you please turn on the microphone?
Am I good? My name is Alice Gingrich, and I've been a resident of Douglas County since 1980. I worked for the Douglas County District Attorney in the early eighties. I'm familiar with some of the issues that have come and gone through the years. I didn't totally catch her name, but she made a comment about $5 a month to help mitigate the cost of the flood damage. I don't know how many people in here pay flood insurance. I pay flood insurance. And my flood insurance started out at $278 per year. That probably about covered that hamburger, I'm thinking. My flood insurance now is 2,100 and some odd dollars a year. I think it's time we buy the hamburger. Because it's not fair for the county to be issuing permits in areas that they know are flood prone. And depending on a federal program that is out of money, is slow to fund, and doesn't even pay for all the damages. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other general public comment? We'll have public comment on this agenda item later. But if you cannot be here later, then you can comment now.
My name is Don Ryan, and I live on Jackie Lane in Johnson Lane. And as I'm sure you're aware, the east side of Jackie Lane was where a lot of the flooding was 10 years ago. The county, after the flood, came down with an excavator and a dump truck and cleaned the storm drains out, something that they should have done before the flood. That's been 10 years. Haven't seen them since. There's all kinds of weeds growing in it. There's trees growing in it. There's whatever growing in it, and it's filled up. The 24-inch ditch is now 14 inches. We had a good, solid rain the other day for about 20, 25 minutes, and I walked out front and the ditch on the side of the road on both sides was full. Fortunately, it stopped raining. We need maintenance, not just new infrastructure, but we certainly need maintenance. Nobody has been, and I drove around before I came here, up and down a number of streets in Johnson Lane. Nobody does any maintenance on any of these ditches whatsoever. I recently put an apron in and got into a conversation with the inspector that came out initially. She wouldn't approve it. And I said, it's only 24 inches deep. I don't need to put in a culvert. And she goes, oh, we have a new ordinance now. Well, that's nice. Doesn't apply in my case. And regardless, why would you put an 18-inch culvert in a 14-inch ditch? There's no coordination between the departments on how things are applied between the building department and the engineering department, in particular in this case. And had the ditch been 24 inches, I'd been more than happy to put in an 18-inch culvert because it would have done something other than fill full of sediment. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other general public comment on matters not on our agenda? All right, with that, we'll close general opening public comment, and we will move to approval of agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gardner.
I move for the approval of the proposed agenda as distributed.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian, that we approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, we will move to our one agenda item. Number five for possible action, discussion regarding Douglas County Stormwater Program, including existing stormwater infrastructure, the stormwater program's current annual funding, current and future stormwater program priorities, and future funding options for the construction and maintenance of stormwater infrastructure and the acquisition and management of critical lands. For this agenda item, we will begin with a presentation led by Courtney Walker, our Stormwater Program Manager. We also will have Wendy Lang, Assistant County Manager, and Jeremy Hutchings, County Engineer, providing support and helping with that presentation. So we'll take the first part of the presentation, maybe about 45 minutes or an hour's worth. And then we're going to take a break. During that break, you can stand up and walk around. As you can see, we've got resources on the walls. We've, we've got a lot of great staff here. So you can take the opportunity to ask questions or look at materials during that break. And of course, use the bathroom, which is down that hallway. And we'll, we will be a little bit flexible on how long that break lasts, depending on when you're looking like you're ready to reconvene. But then we'll finish the presentation. And at the end of the county's presentation, we'll have board questions and comments, and then we'll turn to public comment. We expect this meeting to end no later than 6 o'clock. And we're very interested in hearing what you have to stay, say to about this subject. So we'll, we'll work to get to public comment so you can join in the discussion. With that, we'll turn it to Courtney Walker.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Actually, Wendy Lang, Assistant County Manager, for the record. Just want to take a moment to thank everyone for being here, to echo your comments. Thank you for sharing that overview of how we can expect today to go. I very much want to acknowledge those who have been able to come in person and those who are hopefully watching online today as well. We will have some online resources for those of you who can't be here to explore the materials later at the break. Again, want to thank the public for being here. This is a very important conversation. We've heard a little bit about it in some of the opening comments. We've been talking about this for a number of years. And I'm very excited to engage in a conversation with the community and this important community challenge and this essential dialogue that we will have about this and how we can find solutions. So thank you all for being here. We're looking forward to this collaborative conversation. I also want to thank the team for their hard work. There is a lot of material here and a lot of information, but I think it's going to be shared with you in a way that is helpful to a discussion. And I appreciate all of their work. They've been working on this for a long time. Not only is Courtney going to share some really powerful content to give us some background for the conversation, but I also appreciate the, the team's efforts to come here at this offsite location so that we can engage in a more effective dialogue, have a little bit of a different approach, and be flexible so that we can have a functional conversation. So thank you to everyone for making that happen, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Wendy. Courtney Walker, Stormwater Program Manager, for the record. Fun fact, I've been with Douglas County since 2016, so almost 10 years. My first day that I started, they hired me. They said, you're going to start on February 29th. And I thought that was a joke, but it was a leap year. So technically, I've only had two annual reviews since I've been here. Just kidding, I still get one every year. So I've been here for a while. I've definitely seen some flood events. I've heard about some other ones. So I, you know, I haven't seen every single bad thing that's happened, but I've seen a lot of it. Most recently, the winter of 2023 was very educational. We learned a lot about how a lot of our east side drainages coming out of the pine nuts interact with the irrigation network that runs through the valley. And so there's a lot of moving parts here. I want to let you know, not that I should get extra credit for this, but I am from here. I was born and raised here. My mom even came to my presentation today, which is fun. So I know a little bit about the area. I'm definitely familiar with it. And so I want to go over a lot of different things. I'm going to cover a lot of the stormwater issues that we have and that we have seen over, you know, the past probably 15 years, and it's clearly been going on for a long time. I'm going to cover the infrastructure. I wanted to address something really quick that was made in public comment right off the bat. We have a maintenance crew, and I'm going to point them out because they are here. Jason Samansky in the back, he's our stormwater maintenance supervisor. He was the very first person I hired, and he's been here since 2019. And he's a, he's an integral member of the team, and we couldn't do what we do without him. He runs our crew of maintenance operators. We have Cody Worley in the back, Jesse Parra, and Brad Lyons. Brad Lyons has also been here as long as Jason, so there's a lot of knowledge between the crew. And then I also want to point out Katie Hay. She's our stormwater engineering technician. And she is, I'm going to give her public kudos because she has done a lot to get our division organized. She did a lot of work on this presentation, making it look really nice. And so I really appreciate the team's efforts. We have a really great team. And we do a lot of maintenance in the county. We track a lot of maintenance in the county. And so if there are any issues that we have that, that you think we maybe have not addressed, I would love for you to call us, and we'll go out there and take a look because these guys are driving around out in the field all day, every day, doing work. I can show you, I have slides that show what our infrastructure, what shape it was in when it was first identified in our GAS system, and what shape it's in today. And there's been vast improvements in the maintenance of our existing infrastructure that we have. So I'm also going to talk a little bit about some critical lands in, in particular areas for a bunch of different purposes. And then we'll move into more of a discussion and, and some workshopping. So.
Ms. Walker. Could we have your team actually stand up so we can get a good look at them? And during the break, people can talk to them if they want to. And also, I want to take a moment and thank them.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to start off with this fun video. It's been looping for a while, so hopefully you've been able to orient yourself. But this flood happened in February of 2017, so I had been here for exactly a year by the time it happened. And it certainly wasn't as extensive as the 1997 flood. But there was a lot of water in the valley. And so when we talk about these critical lands, there's certain lands that you do want to try to be thoughtful about keeping development out of. Because this is a flood. You can't stop this kind of flood. This is the Carson River. It's going to happen. It doesn't matter what we do, how much maintenance we do, what projects we build. This flood happens, and it's happened time and time and time again, and it'll be really interesting when it happens again the next time. Have to drink water, or else I'm not going to get through this.
Stay hydrated.
So right, what you're looking at is like Genoa Lakes Golf Course. It's kind of on the west side of the valley. We, we've got a lot of the Genoa area. And as you know, if you've been here for a long time, when the river floods, it tends to flood towards the west. So just an incredible amount of water. It's a, it's a really interesting thing to watch. And you just hope that you're not getting any private property damage out of this in terms of like structures. But a lot of it is open ranchland. I like to acknowledge the ag producers in this area. They have taken this water for a long time. And it's, it's a great thing to have an open field and have this kind of flooding happen there versus a subdivision or a shopping center or something like that. Okay, so our agenda today is going to cover several things. I'm sure this video is a little distracting, so I'll explain what's going on with it. This is right in town. That's Smith's right there. This is the entrance into like Starbucks grocery outlet. This happened in August of 2022, actually on my husband's birthday. We were trying to leave to go camping. And it started flooding in town, and the storm drains just couldn't handle it. And so the water, it got pretty high. It was, it was a pretty interesting event. So now that I've got that out of the way, our agenda is basically, as I stated, we're going to go through stormwater issues, infrastructure that we have collected. We'll talk about some critical land inventory, and we'll go on an overview over that. I'm going to break it down into three areas of Douglas County. We have three watersheds. Debbie's in the audience. She can explain what a watershed is, but basically it's an area where the water collects to a certain water body. So we've got three different watersheds. I'll go over where those are in Douglas County. I'm going to go through a timeline of various flood events, stormwater events that we've had. I'm also going to do a timeline of critical lands that we have obtained several conservation easements throughout the valley over time. So I'm going to highlight some of those things. I'm going to go into the stormwater program maintenance accomplishments and just our planning accomplishments and some of our capital improvements that we have accomplished as well. We did do a stormwater master plan about a year and a half ago that was adopted by this board. It's, we have copies of it here. We've done several drainage master plans. Copies of those are all here, and they're all online as well. And then we're going to take a little break, and then we'll come back and we'll talk about some brainstorming ideas for funding and then just have, you know, a good discussion, question and answer. Okay, so three watersheds are the Carson River watershed. That would be like your greater Carson Valley area. We have the Tahoe, which is actually the Truckee River watershed, because it's the Truckee River that flows through that system. But that's basically the Lake Tahoe portion of, of Douglas County. And then we have the Walker River watershed, which was named after me. Just kidding. That's like your Topaz area. And so those are the three areas of focus that we're going to, we're going to go through. And we've seen, we've seen things happen in all of those areas. Although Tahoe, I will say, is a little bit different, and we'll get into the water quality aspect up at the lake. Okay, so first off, we're going to focus on the Carson River watershed. How many of you live in the Carson River watershed? If you live in the Carson Valley, Johnson Lane, Fish Springs, Runestraw, Gardenville, Genoa, yeah, that's your watershed. So when we get some pretty big flood events, we have several road closures, and that impacts our ability to get around. There's places on Highway 395 that close, Kingsbury Grade closes, pretty much every east to west road from 88 to Foothill Road, those all get closed. And then when we have flooding on the east side of the valley, there's certain dip sections where we just allow the water to go over the road in high-flow events, and you can't drive through that. Well, you shouldn't drive through that. So we do have a lot of impacts from, from flooding, just from our roads in general. I'm going to go through our first, the very first area, well, this isn't the first area drainage master plan, but it's the first one I'm going to talk about. This is for the Runestraw neighborhood. We contracted with a firm named J. E. Fuller to do this drainage master plan, and they do modeling like this to be able to show where does the water go? How deep does it flow? How fast does it flow? And so what are our existing conditions, and does that match what we actually see when we're on the ground? And turns out, it's pretty accurate. They use really detailed topography, LiDAR. They collect it from a plane. It's very, very detailed, and they can run these models and figure out exactly how much water is going, depending on different size storm events. And so these are really helpful. Then they're able to propose projects and then show, show the modeling for the after. So what kind of impact is the project known to have? So this is what it looks like actually on the ground in the Runestraw community. The creek that flows through there is called Smelter Creek. This was in 2023. I think Brad's in the excavator there, trying to keep that culvert clear so that the road can stay open. But I mean, it's a lot of water. And what's unique about Smelter Creek is that it flows through four, four main streets, five, I guess. And all five of them are cul-de-sacs. So when it's running like that, if you're not home, you're not going home. If you are home, you're not leaving. We've had kids in this community have to miss school. There's a lot of issues, but it's a hard problem to solve because how many, how many homes are impacted? Maybe 20. So how do you justify spending a lot of money in that particular area? But it is a challenge, and it does exist, and it, it does impact some residents out there for sure. Here is the Fish Springs area. Bernie would know about this one. This is Pine Nut Creek. This is Joe Lane. So if you're familiar with that area, you're driving east on Fish Springs Road, and then you would make a right onto Joe Lane. This is one of those dip sections that I was speaking about. JT Humphrey is a local photographer here in town. Somehow, he gets to be at the right place at the right time when these things are happening. And so with his permission, I was able to share these videos today. This happened in 2014. I'm imagining Karen was probably in my shoes at that time. And if I were her at that time too, I would be like, ah, I don't know what we're doing here. But I'll go into it. I do have a few plans for this area. So a few hours later, it was as wide as the Carson River. So it's, it's a lot of water that comes, that can come out of that drainage, and this was in a summer thunderstorm. So the issue with Pine Nut Creek is historically, it has intercepted an irrigation ditch. Johanna's going to know this one. The Upper Allerman System was put in, put in place 100 years ago. I don't know, take a guess, a long time ago. And it was to intercept Pine Nut Creek water for irrigation, very smart. But it does intercept the flood flows as well. And so in 2023, the big flood event we had in March, we had a lot of low elevation snow, and then we got a rainstorm. And so there was pretty high flows in Pine Nut Creek. Was it the 100-year event? No, but it was flowing for a long time. And it was enough where it caused actually this to breach. And so it does not hit this Upper Allerman Canal and go north anymore. It used to go north, and it would flow under Fish Springs Road and then into the reservoir. That's along East Valley, if you're familiar with it. It doesn't do that anymore. So if you were to walk and look at this breach, you're looking at the community center, which we know is in the middle of Gardenville. There's several homes, shopping centers in the way of that, and it's about a mile away as the crow flies. So it's definitely a pretty big issue. We also saw some significant erosion on the hillside where Fish Springs Road runs into Fish Springs. That's the only way to get into that community during a flood event. And so if that road were to go, it would cut off a lot of residents. And we almost lost it, didn't we, Courtney? We did. Do you want to talk about that really quick? Yeah, I don't know how to go backwards, but we did almost lose the road. We were just trying to shore up and put material down to, to protect it. And so there's a lot of emergency stuff that happens during that. And so kind of the theme of this presentation is, you know, this problem and this problem and this landmine and this landmine and this landmine. And now that we're aware of all of them, it would be great to be prepared for these things, you know, fix, fix the issue with that road so that we're not trying to do it, because it doesn't ever flood like right now or Tuesday at 1:00 PM when all the guys are at work. It's usually Sunday morning at 10:00 AM is when it's like, hey, can you come to work? Speaking of which, this, that's actually very timely. This issue, this is the reservoir that's on East Valley. And so before that breach happened, the water from Pine Nut Creek was going into this reservoir. And it was actually more water was coming in than we were able to let out. And so that was the 10:00 AM call to Jason saying, hey, I know I promised you that you wouldn't have to come in this, anymore this weekend, but I need you to come in. We had to drain the reservoir so that the dam on it didn't breach, because that would actually go to the town of Minden. And so a lot of, a lot of homes would be affected and town if that were to occur. So we ended up closing Buckeye Road. We rented pumps, and we were pumping water over. We had to clean out these old channels. The Upper Allerman that I, I referenced is breached now. But they don't use it for irrigation anymore. And so I don't know if it's going to get fixed, if it's going to be left open. But either way, some of these systems, they, they end up being abandoned over time. And they're not used for irrigation anymore, but they, the stormwater still goes there. Because how do we differentiate between what's irrigation water and what's storm water? It's all storm water, really, right? It's all coming from a storm at some point in time. So there's, there was a lot of issues that we dealt with that winter, but it was very educational. This is Buckeye Creek. So we're just, if you notice, we're just moving north in the county. So we started at Smelter Creek in Runestraw. We, then we moved to Fish Springs, Pine Nut Creek. And then now we're moving to Buckeye Creek, which is, it runs east to west also out of the pine nuts. And it's where you'll notice it if you're on East Valley Road, just north of Buckeye Road is where that drainage flows through. During this winter, it actually breached this creek. The bank let go, and so we had some flooding over Buckeye Road. The town of Minden Maintenance Yard is right there too. So they experienced flooding, and that's where they keep all their equipment to be able to respond to issues. And so that was not great. One good thing about this incident is that it occurred before we had to empty the reservoir, which is good, because where you empty the reservoir, it actually dumps into Buckeye Creek. So what's happening is, and I'll, I have a slide for this, but what's happening is So what's happening is, and I'll, I have a slide for this, but what's happening is that all of the east to west drainages that I'm discussing right now, they all are, they're all interconnected through the irrigation network in one way or another. And so all the water ends up going to one location, which it's trying to flow north. It's trying to get back to the Carson River as it historically used to flow. So we've done some studies on this too. We did, we have some studies on Pine Nut Creek as well. But J E Fuller, they're the same firm. They, they're good at doing videos like this. And so I don't have them for every drainage plan that we've done, but everyone that they've done, they put together one of these videos. So this is what Buckeye Creek looks like when it is flooding and you can see it, it does impact a pretty wide area. So now I'm going to move north to the Johnson Lane area. I see several familiar faces in here from the Johnson Lane area. We've worked with, with that community for many years, trying to fix some of these problems. They did have a couple of really devastating floods back to back years, which is just really horrible, you know, to deal, to have your yard wash out one year, put it back and then have the same exact thing happen the next year. And so this was the very first drainage master plan that we did. And it was done by J E Fuller. So they've done, I think, a total of three in this area. But this was like our first comprehensive draining, drainage infrastructure exercise. And so let's do the planning. Really, you're supposed to do the planning before you build everything. But as we know, we're, we live in a rural area and things were subdivided over time. And unless it's a subdivision, the drainage improvements are not considered at the time. Usually it's like a parcel map with four parcels and then the drainage is never looked at comprehensively. And so it's infilled over time. And now that so many years have gone by, we have, we have a lot of issues out there. This is in 2014, one of the flash flood events that occurred in July of that year. And so you can see how that would really, not only make you nervous about your house, but your landscaping is definitely in jeopardy after an event like that.
Courtney, how deep is that water?
You know, it's probably like six, eight inches.
So would that house be in the floodplain?
No, it would not. Good question. So the hundred year floodplain i- is usually one foot or more in depth or elevation. And so there are some X shaded mapped areas and that would be flooding less than one foot. That's per the FEMA regulatory floodplain. And so the issue with a lot of these alluvial fan areas is that you see wider spread areas of what we consider flooding, but FEMA doesn't necessarily regulate it or require flood insurance in those types of areas. Thanks. This is essentially what it looked like afterwards. This up here is Hot Springs Mountain. You can see just the sand coming down and it's all coming right down into this developed area here. And it's carrying quite a bit. And the thing with these systems is that they move around. Rivers want to move all the time and that's what they are used to doing, which is fine until you start building around it, adjacent to it, near it, looking at it. You, you build a bridge, you want the river to stay where you built the bridge, but it won't always do that. And so that's why you see bridges washing out in flood events. And so this is a really hard problem to deal with because this flows here this today, but the next big event, it might flow a slightly different way. We have a lot of different projects and when we break off for workshopping, I'm happy to speak about any individual drainage master plans and any of the improvements that, that come out of those. But we do have one planned for that area. So we actually did construct four detention basins that were identified in the Johnson Lane area drainage master plan. There's four detention basins upstream on the B L M land. It took us a while to get that going because if you're going to construct improvements on federal land, you have to go through several environmental studies and all that kind of stuff and it, it takes a long time. So as long as you're patient, you can get it done. So we did build these. I know we've talked a little bit about how we don't have a dedicated funding stream for the stormwater division to build projects. We do have some funding from the general fund to cover maintenance. So you might wonder how we actually built these basins. And unfortunately, it was a result of litigation. And so we did get them done, but is that how we should get them done? Not my preference. It's a little uncomfortable. But we've, we've made friends. We've come a long way. Some of them are in the audience here and I appreciate their participation. But they're out there on B L M land. If, if you want to just ever see what one looks like, you can drive to the end of Stephanie Way. Go to the dirt portion, just keep going and then the basin will be there on the left hand side. So now that I've covered all of the east side drainages, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Carson River. This also happened in 2023. Luckily it happened after we were done dealing with all the stuff on the east side. So once the snow started melting and running off, then we saw high flows in the river. And no, we didn't see a nineteen ninety-seven flood event in the river. We didn't even see a twenty seventeen flood event in the river in twenty twenty-three. But we saw high flows higher than normal, like probably minor flood stage for a long time, a couple of months straight. And so that brings down a lot of debris. This was building up by one of the, it's, I think it's the second diversion that flows into the Carson Valley. It's on the Carson Valley Golf Course. There's the Rocky Slough and the Virginia Slough. And actually I'm saying that the wrong way because the Virginia comes off here and the Rocky comes off here. And all the debris was building up on that irrigation structure. And so it was causing an unlimited amount of water to go into the Virginia ditch. The Virginia ditch actually flows under three ninety-five before you get to the stoplight at Riverview. And then it goes down kind of adjacent to the hospital. And there's a, there's an assisted living facility over there as well. And it was causing a lot of flooding because it was backing up and going out of that ditch because we couldn't control how much water was going into it. And so having flooding like that adjacent to the hospital is really not what you want to see. But we were able to kind of work together to pull out some of that debris. I remember there was, I can't remember who it was, if it was the fire department or the sheriff's department, but they wanted to use bombs and blow it up. Yeah. And I was, I was kind of scratching my head because I was like, I don't know if we want to do that. There's another diversion downstream of that. Davidson here, he knows about it. The Cottonwood Slough is downstream of that. And so you would just be pushing your problem further downstream. Another fun landmine that I found out about in that winter was, we have a levee on the east fork of the Carson River. It's at the Carson Valley Golf Course. I didn't know that it existed until some residents called me and said it was severely eroded. And I thought that sounded like a pretty big problem for sure. I just didn't think it was my problem, but turns out we all had to kind of come together. Nobody inspects it, nobody maintains it. But the county has fixed it before with, in combination with a couple of other agencies that contributed funding. So it's been an issue before. I, I did a lot of research. There's an online archive of the Record Courier. And you can look up old articles, just searching keywords and timeframes. And so the levee broke in nineteen ninety-seven. That makes total sense. The emergency manager at the time worked with some agencies and they cobbled together some funding and they fixed it before the spring runoff. That's great. They fixed it and then what? So in two thousand and five, this same issue happened again. And people came together and they found some funding and they fixed it. And they said, alright, that's fixed. That's it? I'm just like, okay. So anyways, it happened again. I didn't know about it. No, nobody that I knew, nobody on my team knew about it. Nobody that worked for the county that I knew, knew about it. And so these things exist and they've existed for a long time. And it's, it's something now that's memorialized in our stormwater master plan. So if I move or I, you know, get hit by a bus or something like that, it's in the plan. So at least whoever comes in next knows that it exists. That's really helpful. Do we have a maintenance inspection, funding stream? No, but at least we know that it's there. Because it'll fail again. They say there's two kinds of levees. Levees that have failed and levees that will fail. And this one's both. Just really quick, this is West Fork Vista. It's off of Centerville on the west side of the valley. This is a smaller irrigation ditch. It's the Brockless Slough. It's smaller than the Carson River. But it also gets debris that builds up against it. Luckily, this one is small enough that we can reach with our own in-house excavator. I've seen the guys out there getting a little creative with how they do it. Pushing, pushing my comfort zone a little bit, but, but they're able to clear it because it does cause flooding of homes and the road in that area. Okay, so I'm going to go into our drainage infrastructure. We have really done a, a, a good job. I'm just going to say the guys and Katie have done a great job of getting all this, all these assets into G I S and getting it to function so that we can track our inspection and maintenance. And so if you were to tell me this culvert over here is, is seventy-five percent plugged and I haven't seen anybody ever, ever over here maintaining it. We can bring it up, find that asset online and say, well, it was last inspected two weeks ago and it was in good condition. And here's a photo. And so we could kind of at least have a little bit of backup, which is, which is huge. So we know we have a lot of infrastructure. These four guys in the back are the ones that are taking care of over seven hundred culverts, a bunch of basins. It's, it's like fourteen hundred assets. It's a lot of, a lot of things.
Courtney, can we hit pause here for just a second?
Yeah, sorry. So I'm, I'm going to jump in. Jennifer Davidson, county manager for the record. So I think it's really important for context for people who are curious. I want to make sure that we're really clear on reflecting on the history of stormwater in Douglas County, just super briefly. So development in Douglas County has existed for quite some time and has pre-existed planning, best practices and county regulations. There were homes being put in place before formal government procedures were brought in to say it makes sense to build here. It doesn't make sense to build here. As part of that historical development of Douglas County, there's a lot of infrastructure that was put in, irrigation infrastructure put in by the ranching community, ag community to maintain their land and to serve their needs. The benefit to us as Douglas County is that a lot of the water and that comes from our stormwater issues can flow in this irrigation network. It just happens to go there as part of what's existing today. But these pieces of historical infrastructure that predate formal government action, the levee is a good example of one of those things. I don't want it to sound like we don't care about these things or we should have known. It is, we discovered these things that existed historically and are failing and are now creating an inventory of these things because the board took action in twenty eighteen to create a stormwater program. The program did not exist before twenty eighteen. So this inventory that Courtney is speaking to, these pictures, inspections, all of this work in the field did not exist until that time period. And there is more important to be, important work to be done on this front. But I don't want it to sound like we don't care or we weren't paying attention. It is what we, the problem we inherited and now we're trying to solve for that, if that's what you accept. So go ahead, Courtney.
Yes. Thank you for that context. I know I can get a little extra.
But we've been, we've been focusing a lot on what's happened in recent history. I just want to make sure we have history.
Yes, thanks. Yes. Okay, I'm going to move on from this slide.
No problem.
Okay. We also have an inventory of our critical lands and a lot of these areas are seen in that very first video that I posted that are underwater when the river breaks out of its banks. Over time, we've been able to get several conservation easements to keep open. And then there's some that are deliberately identified as critical land to not have a, a house or something on it. And I'll go through some of the history of, of that as well. So that's kind of your overview of Carson Valley and all the different interesting things that happen around here. At least that I've, I've seen and been around for. So I'm going to move to Lake Tahoe. So I'm just going to step away from the flooding issue for a moment because flooding is not the primary issue at the lake. Everyone's aware of the keep Tahoe blue and we have to, and the sucky disc and the clarity and being able to see down into the lake. And so that, I'm going to focus more on what our regulatory requirements are at the lake and how it fits into the stormwater program because it's the same issue. It's just for water quality, not for flooding. But we still have to build large projects. We have to maintain our infrastructure and do a lot of work up there and it's not optional. So I'll go into a little bit of the details on that. Okay, so we have a program called the Total Maximum Daily Load. It's the T M D L. It's a really poor acronym. I don't think it explains really what, what it means to, to any of you, but basically it's what's the maximum amount of pollutant loading that we can put into the lake every day and still maintain some sort of clarity. And so basically, there's three ways that you can kind of reduce your impact. And the main pollutant source that they focus on up there is fine sediment particles. That's what's clouding the lake's clarity. When the sun shines through, if there's these little tiny particles floating around in the water, it makes it harder to see further down. And so our main goal is to reduce the amount of fine sediment particle going into Lake Tahoe. And they have given us three ways in which we can accomplish that. The first one is through large scale water quality improvement projects. These are big basins, wet basins, dry basins, bed filters. They're kind of like detention basins, but they're to filter the pollutants out and then the water is released cleaner to the lake. These projects are pretty expensive. They're pretty large scale and they need to be inspected and maintained on an annual basis in order to comply with the program requirements. The second way is through parcel best management practices. So everyone who owns a home, a business, an apartment, any sort of development at Lake Tahoe has to do their best management practices. The acronym for that is B M Ps. They have to infiltrate a certain size storm event on sites. That's private properties that have to do that. And it's every, everybody, it's enforced by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. The third way to reduce fine sediment particles from going into the lake is through our road operations. And so when we have a winter storm, you know, the crews are out, they're putting brine on the roads or putting sand down on the roads for public safety. Most of Douglas County is, is pretty steep over there on that part of the lake. Kingsbury Grade, for example, all of the neighborhoods that run off of Kingsbury Grade are pretty steep. And then we go all the way to Glenbrook. So you've seen Zephyr Heights. I mean, that's a crazy one. So road operations, how, once you put the abrasives down on the road and the storm passes, how quickly are you able to get out there with a sweeper to pick it up? Because if you just leave it there and you never pick it up, cars are just going to continue to drive over it. The particles get smaller and smaller, smaller. You have another storm. It all goes in the lake. And so that's essentially how that works and I'll go into a little bit. So these are some of our major projects that we have up there. Cave Rock Water Quality Improvement Project is a very big basin that accommodates all of the runoff from the Cave Rock General Improvement District neighborhood. That's a very, very steep neighborhood. They were actually not able to do their best management practices on an individual site basis because it's so steep. So they did this regional project and did this, this basin. The, the general improvement district is responsible for the maintenance of it. But Douglas County is responsible for reporting it, inspecting it and proving that it's in functioning condition each year. Kale, Kale Basin Water Quality Improvement Project, that's another one. There's actually two wet basins that are down there. And those are maintained by Douglas County. We have done a stream restoration. Burke Creek, it's kind of adjacent to the sushi pier. Kettle Community Center, kind of that area. There's the other wet basin at the end of Hale Drive. The State Line Stormwater Association, all the casinos get together and they treat their stormwater as a partnership. And so they all pay into that. And so we're able to, to take credit for the casino corridor. And then this photo over here on the right is just an example of a private parcel B M P. So where your water drips off your roof, they have to armor that soil with something so that the water infiltrates and doesn't run off and carry the, the soil downhill. And then our road operations. So many of you may not know this, but Douglas County doesn't actually maintain very many roads in, uh, at, at Lake Tahoe. And so it's hard for us to implement road operations. So we have to partner with the Kingsbury General Improvement District to ensure that they're doing their road maintenance. Um, and then we're doing our assessments four times a year to ensure that their, their efforts are paying off. Um, and that is constant coordination with them. I was actually at their board meeting last night, just educating their board on how the whole thing works. Um, and so a lot of this is, is through partnerships and accomplishing it. So the big take home here is that we're required, um, our regulating, regulating body is the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection. So we have an inter-local agreement with them to, uh, implement the TMDL program. Um, they also have an inter-local agreement with Washoe County and Nevada DOT. So all three entities on the Nevada side are regulated by that entity. And then on the California side, it's the Lohonton Water Quality Control Board. And so City of South Lake Tahoe, Eldorado County, Placer County and Caltrans are all participating on the California side. We all collaborate together because we're all dealing with the same thing. The major take home on this slide is that we're required to obtain and maintain a certain number of credits each year. And hopefully you can see this in the back, but for example, in twenty twenty-one, we were supposed to have a hundred and one credits. By twenty twenty-six, a hundred and sixty-eight. Right now we have a hundred and sixty-six. So we're almost good for next year. Uh, twenty thirty-one, a hundred eighty-eight. So as you can see, as time goes on, your requirements are more and more and more. Um, so not only do you have to maintain what you're doing now, but you also have to build more and maintain more and continue to do that. Um, and it's probably the window of it's probably another, uh, thirty years. They have a certain, uh, limit, but they're constantly evaluating the program, which, you know, can, can cause funding issues for the local jurisdictions um, to implement this program. But as I stated before, it's not optional. We are required to, to do this work.
That's what, that's what I was going to ask is, is we, this is not a volunteer program. Okay. We are required to do this. Um, and there, there are penalties, penalties associated with non-compliance?
I don't want to find out, but yes. We have not. Yeah.
Courtney, you had a question from the audience. They wanted to know who makes the requirement?
It's the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, state agency.
EPA.
EPA is the federal. Okay. So we also have a bunch of drainage infrastructure in Lake Tahoe. We also inspect and maintain most of that. A lot of, a lot of the stuff at Lake Tahoe is through various general improvement districts. I'm going to use the term GID. If that's okay with everyone, I don't want to throw out too many acronyms, but we have several GIDs at the lake. And when they were created, most of the time it was to handle road maintenance and drainage maintenance. Um, and so it's challenging. We don't do a lot, but what we do, what we do do, we keep track of up there as well. We also have a lot of, uh, critical land up at the lake. A lot of it is Forest Service, but we do have, um, some other conservation easements and things like that up there. Okay. So now I'm going to move to my watershed. Just kidding. I think it's Commissioner Gardner's watershed, Walker River watershed. Uh, so we're going to go down to the South County and talk about some of the things that we have also learned over time that occur in that part of our county. Uh, we do have some road closures that we, that we deal with in that particular area as well. Um, Highway three ninety-five, uh, if you remember also a few years ago, it was probably, I don't know, five or six, that we had a mudslide that went over three ninety-five down by the Topaz Lodge. Um, that caused a lot of issues. We also had a mudslide. I'll show a photo of in a minute here um, in Holbrook Highlands. And that was of course directly after the Tamarack Fire. So flood after fire is a real issue for us as well. There's the photo of it. Um, there's a big drainage that comes down. Um, and for the most part, you know, it's, it's in, it's in the spot that it should be in, but it carried a lot of mud and, um, shut down a lot of the roads out there. And so, um, after we have a fire, these are things that we deal with. And we work closely with the weather service to, to try to monitor the rain in these areas directly after a fire because we lost all the vegetation to hold back the soil. So. That's us with the excavator there cleaning that one up. Uh, Topaz Ranch Estates has seen several issues recently. Uh, this is one where, uh, the culvert completely plugged under the road and water was just flowing freely over it. Uh, I just want to mention that Douglas County does not perform the maintenance within the Topaz Ranch Estates area. It, they have a GID down there that, uh, is supposed to handle road maintenance and stormwater drainage infrastructure. They have a water utility, um, as well. Uh, but sometimes you have events that are outside of the capacity of an entity like that to, to be able to handle some of the issues. So here on the right is, um, that drainage in the video here where you see Jason standing there. That's what it looked like before. And then he came in and cleaned it, um, afterwards. And as I stated, we don't do, Douglas County does not do the maintenance within that GID. But we did this work for them and then, uh, we had an invoice that we submitted to them. And then it went before this board to make the decision to waive, uh, that payment for them. So full disclosure, we don't usually go down there and, and clean stuff up unless we're trying to be a good teammate. Okay. So that's why it also doesn't look like we have very much infrastructure in that part of the county because we don't. We maintain the stuff in Holbrook Highlands and we maintain the stuff in, uh, Topaz Lake itself. And then we have Reese Lane and Penrod Lane. Um, there is a bunch of infrastructure in, uh, Topaz Ranch Estates. We just have it, we, at some point we might collect infrastructure that's not maintained by us, but at this point we're mainly focusing on stuff that is the county's responsibility to maintain. We do have some critical lands out in the Topaz Ranch Estates area too. Um, all this area in green that you see out here in TRE, that's another acronym. I hope that's okay. Topaz Ranch Estates. Um, a lot of this is open because it is the drainages that come off the mini Haha Mountain. Um, and so they, they had the foresight to keep it open. It doesn't mean that it's never going to be an issue because it, it, it was. I just showed you a photo and a, and a video of it. Uh, but we do have some conservation easements and critical lands down there that we're keeping open. Okay. I'm going to transition into a little bit of the history here. Um, it's, it's really interesting in this community, how many times we've seen flood events and then there's a gap of time in between them happening. And so nobody really makes any progress. Um, but then one happens again and people say, we should do something. And as you know, we, we've done, taken a few steps, but we haven't, um, crossed over the finish line really quite yet. Uh, so here's all of our historical events up until like nineteen sixty-three. I mean, there's a few more. I didn't put every single one. Um, but as you'll note here, all of the events that I have here in blue are rain on snow, river floods. And that's not because we never had alluvial fans flooding, flash flooding back in the day. But really it was when people were first, you know, when, when we were developing Douglas County, Gardinerville, Minden, those areas. Um, people were living near the river. They were living in town where the towns were established. They weren't living in communities like Rune Shroth or Johnson Lane or Fish Springs. And so I guarantee you, we were still having flash floods, but there wasn't a lot of people living out there. And so it wasn't documented. Usually you document an event when it impacts a lot of people. Um, so you can see, you know, it's been happening since eighteen seventy-two. I'm sure it was happening before then too. Um, but these are what we have, um, documented. And you can see that eighteen seventy-two, eighteen eighty-six, eighteen ninety, eighteen ninety-one, um, nineteen thirty-seven, nineteen fifty. I mean, it happens periodically. We, we know ninety-seven, I remember that one. And then two thousand and five, I remember that one, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and seventeen, twenty twenty-three. You see a pattern here. Just kind of keeps, keeps going. So it's going to happen again is my point there. This slide has a few other colors to it. So we still have blue is rain on snow, river flooding. Our tan color is alluvial fan flash flooding. Um, in the red here is when the community has proposed doing things, proposed actions. And the green is when we successfully took an action. There's not a lot of green. Sorry for that. But hopefully we'll see some in the future. So in nineteen eighty-six, that was a pretty big flood event. Um, ninety-one, we had an alluvial flash flood out in the Johnson Lane area. And in nineteen ninety-two, they, this actually probably should be green because they established a flood task force. It flooded two more times and then they said, let's establish a flood control district in nineteen ninety-four. And we all know that didn't occur, but they, they, they recommended it. In ninety-seven, big flood event. Two thousand and five, substantial flood event, not as big as ninety-seven, but it happened. Um, in two thousand and nine, the county engineer Mahmoud Azad, at the time, he proposed doing a stormwater utility and a stormwater master plan. Um, and it's in red because we didn't, we didn't take those actions. It flooded again on the river in twenty eleven. And then fourteen fifteen, many of you in this room will remember those events. Those were alluvial flash flood events. And, um, those occurred right after that pretty much. So then in twenty sixteen, that's when I started. Um, the county manager at the time was Larry Werner. He proposed doing a stormwater utility. And it's in red because they, we didn't do it. We decided not to do it. Uh, in twenty seventeen, that's from my very first video. I was here for a year. Big flood. Um, in twenty eighteen, the board decided to divert one point one million dollars from the general fund. I think, I believe it was actually from reserves at that time to fund the stormwater maintenance program. So that's when we took some action. So it's in green. Um, and so you really don't want to fund an ongoing program from your reserve fund. Um, if you want to see it keep going. Um, so, but they did it and I think Larry was on the board at that time. Um, so that's why we're all here now. That's why the guys in the back are here. That's why Katie's here. That's how we're funded. We're funded from a general fund transfer. And, uh, we've made a lot of progress over the years for sure. Uh, a lot of the footage that I showed was in this, it was a river and alluvial fan flooding in twenty twenty-three. That's the first time I've had that one documented. Um, and then in twenty twenty-four, as a result of that flood, we put together a stormwater master plan and Karen, who was here earlier, who spoke in public comment. Um, she works for a consulting firm now and she helped us put together that plan. It was adopted by this board last year. And that's where it has all the meat of all the things that we could do as a community. Um, and so it's a, it's a really great plan. I encourage you to look it up. It's constantly evolving. We have a prioritized list of projects on there. As factors change, um, those projects can move around and become uh, being in different priorities. Um, but it's a, it's a good plan. Uh, I'm just going to touch really quick on the critical land conversation. So we have been able to obtain conservation easements. Uh, the views are very critical to our area. And these lands that provide those views also are underwater periodically. And so it's good if we can, a conservation easement essentially keeps the land with the land owner, but removes the development rights off of it. And so that's, that's a big deal. We want to see less homes where we have riverine flooding because we can't do anything to, to fix that type of issue. And so, uh, we have tried to fund this ourselves. Um, in two thousand and two, Carson City does this. They have an open space sales tax. So a quarter percent of their sales tax, uh, goes into a fund and they've pretty much acquired all of the, the land around the river. So they have several public parks and a lot of access and it floods and they don't have a lot of damage. Uh, but we voted that down in two thousand and two. We still have been able to acquire several conservation easements. Some have been donated. Some were through this funding source called the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act. Uh, that was when they were selling federal lands around Las Vegas. Um, and then bringing the money up here for conservation easements down in the Carson Valley and water quality improvement projects up at Lake Tahoe. So that's how we've been able to pay for a lot of those projects that, that funding source is no longer in existence, unfortunately. Uh, so we've got a few more pretty large conservation easements over time. Uh, and then in twenty twenty, we tried to pass an open space tax again, and we failed to do that unfortunately. Um, so we're, we're continuing to kind of piece them in where we can. Um, I should explain.
Before you get off on that, could I just ask?
Yeah.
You have the numbers you have down to the eight point nine million and so forth. Is that the cost for? And who, who paid for that cost?
Um, I do have Jacques Etchegoyen in the audience who helped. Sorry to put you on the spot. He helped to facilitate the acquisition of several of these. And I believe this is the price of the conservation easement? Yeah.
County paid that?
Uh, no, the county has paid zero of these. It's been funded through, a lot of it was through the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act. Um, I don't know if there's any other funding sources or if that was the primary one. That's it. Okay. But that we, that's not available to us anymore. But no, no county dollars were used.
I, so before we leave this also, I think it's important to, and I think I saw Mr. Husman, uh, here. I don't know if he left or not.
He's here. I see him.
Huh? No, Mr., uh, David Husman?
Yeah, he's right there in the back on this side.
Oh, okay. There he is. Okay. I know I saw him. Okay. Um, I just want to point out, uh, Mr. Husman, uh, Mr. Stodick and, uh, Mr. Scossa have, have all, uh, served. They recognize the need and, and have all served and continue to serve on our, on our, uh, um, Water Conveyance Committee. Okay. So they continue to be able to regulate water and how it flows throughout the county and, and we appreciate that effort. I did, I wanted to take the opportunity to give them a shout out. Thank you so much for continuing to participate in that.
Auntie Scossa is in the audience also. Yeah. So very beautiful. Um, it, there's a lot of benefits to preserving critical lands. Uh, it's, it's really pretty around here. Uh, it's nice to keep it open and for when it's flooding. Um, but I've got some really beautiful photos from Jacques. Appreciate those. Um, all right. So I know I've outlined a lot of problems. A lot of times we've tried to solve problems. Yes.
Just since we're jumping in, could you go back one?
I think so. Yeah.
One more. So when we talk about critical lands, what we're talking about is land that is critical for the quality of our water and for the drainage of storm, stormwater back down into the aquifer. Is that right?
Yes.
And it's my understanding that all of this land would be zoned A nineteen or, or more because all land in the county is zoned A nineteen or more, meaning oh, there can be some forest in range. Okay. But a lot of the farmland would be agricultural, one house per nineteen acres. That's what it would be zoned right now.
If it's in the one hundred year floodplain.
Okay.
Which a lot of it is, not all of it is, but a lot of it is.
Okay. So just, I mean, this is a critical point, I think, uh, to talk about critical lands. Those lands both serve the purpose of helping our rural character continue, our farming history continue and, and they're critical to the quality of our water and the drainage of our stormwater. All right. Thank you. Just wanted, wanted to dial that in and emphasize that. Thanks.
Takes a village. Okay. So just shifting gears a little bit. Um, I did talk a lot about problems. A lot of times we've tried to solve our problems. We kind of, kind of have started to do that a little bit. Um, so I'm going to focus on a little bit more of the positivity aspect. Uh, we have had a lot of accomplishments, uh, since the formation of the group in twenty, well, I'll say twenty nineteen is when they were actually hired. It took a lot of time to conduct interviews and purchase equipment to, to do all the things that we do today, but we're, we're pretty well set up. Uh, we have, we formed the group, we funded the group in twenty eighteen. Uh, since then, we've been doing area drainage master plans in several of these communities where we saw flooding and Karen, at the beginning of public comment, expressed her frustration, sees a flood, what are you going to do? I don't know. Now at least we have, we have a pretty good idea of what we would do, um, if we could figure out how to, how to fund it. Uh, we do have a lot of equipment. We have, not a lot. We have an excavator. That's, it's That's, it's the biggest mini X you can get, is what I've been told. Um, we have a vector truck. It's a big vacuum truck. It cleans storm drains. Um, it's very powerful vacuum. Uh, it cleans culverts, it cleans a lot of that stuff. Um, there's a lot of moving parts, very expensive truck. Um, but very valuable. Uh, we've constructed some basins in Johnson Lane, as I stated before. I'm going to call that an accomplishment. It's not maybe the way we wanted to get there, but we did it. Uh, we've acquired some parcels recently. If you follow the, the Board of County Commissioners meetings, uh, we have acquired a couple of parcels in the Fish Springs area to address the flooding on Pine Nut Creek. So we've acquired, uh, a Red Hawk parcel, which would, a hundred percent have a house on it today if we didn't acquire it. And we acquired what I refer to as the Denmark parcel. Um, and that's just located just downstream of the Red Hawk parcel. Red Hawk is right off of East Valley Road, just to the south of Fish Springs Road. Um, and then we've also been awarded a grant, a FEMA grant, to do a detention basin on a one acre lot in the Johnson Lane area on Pamela Place. That was seeing extensive flooding. There would be a house on that lot today if we didn't buy that, that acre lot. Um, and then as I said, in twenty twenty-four, we adopted the stormwater master plan as well. So we have a, a pretty solid plan moving forward. Uh, so in this plan, there's, there's a lot of information. Uh, but basically it talks about what we do for maintenance, whose responsibility it is to do certain things. We coordinate with a lot of our stakeholders. That would be general improvement districts, towns, agricultural producers, residents. Uh, we're trying to do a lot of coordination. Everyone who lives here is a stakeholder. Um, we have regulatory obligations, that's primarily, primarily at the lake. We do have some regulatory obligations in the valley as well. Um, and in, in the, uh, in the Walker River watershed, Topaz as well. And then it has prioritized capital improvement projects as well. And as I said, those things change. We prioritize them not just on how much do they cost, but how many people does it help? And does the county, how easy is it to do the project? Does the county own the land or is it privately owned or is it on BLM land? Um, and so we do look at the cost and we do look at how many people it helps, but there's a, a number of factors that go into that. And so that's why the list changes. So Red Hawk and Denmark, those two parcels were privately owned. And so they might've fallen lower on the list. Now they're owned by Douglas County, so the project just got a little bit easier to do. Uh, did we, did we apply and get awarded a grant? Okay, we have some money to actually do project, provided we have the matching funds for that. That project might move up higher on the list. Um, and so it's, it's a dynamic list. Uh, we're going to be updating it periodically. Um, there's, we, we need to include a little bit more about the critical land, um, initiatives that we're trying to achieve as well. And so it's a living document. We're definitely going to be updating it constantly, so. Did you have, are you good? Uh, we are.
We could break here if you want to.
Uh, we could break wherever, wherever we get to.
Yeah, uh, maybe it makes sense to break here, if that's okay. Um, can we make an announcement really quick before we break? Okay, great. All right, um, so we are going to continue with accomplishments after the break. We're probably going to break for about fifteen minutes approximately. Um, during that time, we have a lot of Douglas County staff members in attendance. We're here to answer any questions. If you have a burning question that you want to see answered as part of this presentation, feel free to grab any one of us up here. Douglas County staff members, raise your hand in the back if you're here to answer questions. We're here for you. Also, for those who are following along online, if you want to submit your question by email, we are open to that. Um, and we will, uh, have a card on our presentation screen with the email address. It's B O C C, public comment at douglasnv.gov. Did I get that right, Wendy? No, did I, she goes, no. What did I get wrong? It'll be on the screen, the correct address, right? So please, please do submit your public comment on the email address that will be displayed on the screen for those following along. We will read those questions and those comments and we'll try to cover as many questions as we can as part of our presentation. Um, if we happen to overlook you and we didn't get to your question, we will, after the workshop, um, over the next week or so, we will write you back. We will get you an answer if we didn't get to your question today. So thank you for that. Uh, and with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it to you.
Questions for people in the audience?
Feel free to approach any of our staff members who are present, uh, if you have questions in the audience.
With that, we will adjourn probably for around fifteen minutes.
Zoom our seats so we can move forward.
Anyways.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna start now, so let's, I invite you to go back to your seats. Thank you. I know I got some of my questions answered, I hope you did too, and we'll turn the floor back over to Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Courtney Walker, Stormwater Program Manager, for the record. I'm gonna try to move a little quick through the rest of the main information that I have, and then Jen and I are gonna kinda tag-team this together. Jen, our county manager, Jennifer Davidson.
You can call me Jen.
Yeah. Um, so I talked a little bit earlier about our drainage infrastructure and how we kind of classify them, and so I want to give you a picture of what the shape of our infrastructure was in at the formation of the maintenance department and what it is in today. So if we classify something as serious, it means that the culvert is probably most likely, if it is a culvert, it's most likely all the way full. We have to bring our excavator and our vector truck out there to clear the issue. If it's in fair condition, it's got a fair amount of sediment built up in it. We could clean it with our vector truck. If it's in satisfactory condition, it might be tumbleweeds or brushwork or something like that that we can do most likely by hand. And if it's in good, then it's functioning as intended and we don't need to do anything at this time. So when we first, when the guys first collected these assets, a little under fifty percent was considered to be in good condition. And as of last week, over ninety percent of it is in good condition. So you can see we're doing a lot better than we were in the past.
Thanks.
And that's, that is because the board transferred the one million dollars a year for stormwater maintenance. So we have made a lot of progress. And we don't want to slip backwards from that.
And Courtney, can I, can I just jump in here? Huge shout out to our stormwater crew. I have personally seen them out in the field. Culverts are not easy to clean. They get in waiters, they're in the cold water, in the middle of winter, working their butts off, and I cannot tell you how proud we are of the work they do. They get a lot done for the million dollars that we are routing to this program. That's a huge, huge return, huge shout out to them, so thank you.
I do want to mention that this is, of course, outlining county infrastructure. We are in the process of obtaining and, and documenting private sand oil separators that discharge into irrigation dishes. It's quite a list. We need to continue to work on that and communicate with those, those property owners on, on continuing to do that maintenance. But this is all Douglas County infrastructure. Okay, so some more accolades for the team. I told them I would embarrass them just a little bit. But since 2018, they've logged fifty-three hundred inspections and performed a lot of maintenance of culverts, basins, and storm drains. They have removed thirty-four thousand cubic yards of material. Most of that is sediment. And if you were to calculate that in something that we can relate to, it would fill our Douglas County Community Center two-thirds full with sediment. That is a lot of dirt that's, that's been removed from our systems over the years. That's a lot of truckloads, a lot of truckloads of dirt. They also perform some really great erosion control work where we've had roads wash out, or we have a lot of dip sections where the water runs over the road. And on the downstream portion of that, it causes a lot of erosion in some cases, which is a public safety issue if a car were to drive off the road. So they've done a lot of rock work to stabilize several of these areas as well, and they've placed enough rock in this ca, in this county to cover three football fields full all the way. So it's a lot of rock. So good job, you guys. Thank you for the work that you do every day. Um, I want to point out that while we have focused a lot on some of the more rural areas, we do have a pretty big storm drain network within the town of Minden, town of Gardenville, there's definitely some in Johnson Lane, Chichester, Windhaven, Westwood, neighborhoods like that, kind of where we are right now, there's an underground network of pipes. You'll see a grate in the ground. The water flows off the road into the grate, goes into the storm drain system, never for anyone to think about ever again. But these systems will not live forever, and we currently do not have any savings account for replacing them. You can think about it like the pipes that deliver the water to your house. We turn on the faucet, water comes out. Well, your water bill is covering maintaining that infrastructure along with providing you the amount of water that you're using. And so there, they have a savings account built up to try to replace that infrastructure over time because it won't last forever. The storm drain network functions the same way, but there's no savings account to deal with it when it's failing. And the reason I point this out is that just last week, we found one that's failing, and oh my gosh, it's in town on Waterloo. David Housman, sorry, I'm gonna call you out. He was irrigating his fields, as he has the right to do, and we love what it looks like because it's green and open and beautiful and not a neighborhood. And when he's, he's irrigating, the water goes through a storm drain system that is maintained by Douglas County, and it is failing. And so now we're getting flooding in the food closet parking lot, Backpack Buddy's parking lot right there. There's a couple of community members living in the area that are dealing with it too, and so we're gonna ha, we have to fix it. We can't not fix it. We don't have funding to fix it, but we're gonna have to find funding to fix it. And so that's hopefully gonna happen within the next month or two where we'll deal with that. But we're gonna continue to see that. These systems will last forty, fifty years, maybe, until you start seeing some issues. Luckily, this one's not in the middle of the road, but if it was in the middle of the road, you just start to see the road collapsing till all of a sudden there's a hole.
That looks like that.
Maybe. And so these are things that we need to be dealing with, and just because it's not within the county jurisdiction, I can tell you that the towns aren't, they don't have a savings account for replacing any of these systems either. So this is kind of our back-of-the-napkin list of things that we know that we have, but it's just kind of another one of those landmines that are gonna pop up over time. Here are some photos of it. You may have noticed. I noticed it because I live really close to this area, and I was leaving for soccer practice, and I thought, huh, I wonder if someone's sprinkler broke. And then through further investigation, we realized that our, our pipe is broken. It is separated, and so the water has nowhere to go. I don't know where it's going. It's under someone's backyard, maybe. So we tried to get a camera in there to see what, what the issue was, but there's a lot of backup in there. So anyways, we're gonna have to hire a contractor to do something like this because it's outside of the scope of the equipment that we have to be able to handle a project like this. So we do have a lot of capital improvement projects, as I've stated, that are in the Stormwater Master Plan. Some of them are identified as critical land, and in that critical land, it's gonna promote groundwater recharge for whatever, whether or not a project or not happens on that land. We do have other projects that are in the blue, and those are public safety, keep roads open. And so in certain areas where the water overtops the road, we want to put in a bigger box culvert so that the water can, in the higher flow events, go under the road and we can keep the road open. So those are all the projects. I'm happy to speak with anybody offline about all the individual ones. I'm not gonna go into every single one, but we do have a lot, and they were all generated through our area drainage master plans, compiled into the Stormwater Master Plan and prioritized accordingly. Uh, we do have, we haven't done a study for every area that sees an issue. We have a running list of future areas that we want to do studies on. It will probably produce additional capital improvement projects, and so we're just gonna keep going. Hopefully, we can start to accomplish some and get them off the list, but until that happens, the list will keep getting longer. Uh, here's where some of our critical lands are identified, at least for stormwater capital improvements. I, I talked a lot about some of these issues. Here's the Fish Springs area, Ruin Straff, Johnson Lane. And so those are all, all in the plan. And we actually have a viewer where you can see all these things. Um, there's other additional critical lands. The gray is the FEMA one-hundred-year floodplain, and the orange is critical land that we've identified within the hundred-year floodplain. And so if we had a funding source and we had a landowner that said, I want to take the development rights off of my property, then, and they're in one of these areas, then we could, we could look at doing that.
Is this a good time to ask a question about that?
Sure.
Okay. And I'm not sure who would be best, perhaps Chief Civil Deputy District Attorney Doug Ritchie. If, if land is designated A-19, which I think much of this, especially the land adjacent to the highway, would be A-19, can we just change that zoning to be, so A-19 means it's agricultural and the owner can build one house per every nineteen acres? Can we, as a board, change that because we don't want any houses there?
Later in this meeting? Well, maybe we should word it.
What he means is if we do that, we'll be sued and we'll lose.
Good. You may or may not have heard of the Federal Lands Bill. This has been in the works for a long time, fifteen, twenty years, where there's some land owned by the federal government that has been identified for transfer, being transferred to the county, not for development, for, as a critical land, for flood control, for expanding the fairgrounds, recreation, there's a lot of uses. And so these lands are identified in, in the landfill, and we're, we're hopefully gonna be pushing that forward. It looks like we're in a good, good spot for it. And a lot of our projects overlap in these areas, but some, you know, you might just want to keep looking at BLM land and not, you know, if it ever gets sold off to a private developer, it could be developed at some point in time, and we don't want to see that. We'd like to see the land be transferred to the county as an asset for our community. I think this is where.
Good.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna give Courtney a break. She's been talking for a while. Do you want to have a seat?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna transition now from why to how. So we spent a good chunk of this meeting explaining the challenges we're facing, what we're capable of doing with our stormwater program today, where we want to go, all of the wonderful goals and objectives that we have, and this slide speaks to that. We want to look to acquire additional critical land. We also, as we're acquiring this land in conservation easements or otherwise acquiring it, we will have to manage this land and maintain it and make sure that it doesn't become a nuisance if it's not a conservation easement, and it's something the county owns that will be management associated with it. We want to do more of a lot of the good work that we're doing, but we have limited funding today. That includes capital projects, that includes all of the stormwater infrastructure. Courtney told you that we have these assets.
um, that we have these assets that were required to maintain, but no repair and replacement schedule and no funding set aside for that future replacement schedule. Basically what we are funding today is the day-to-day operating costs of the program, um, with a million dollars. So we have in essence, a funding gap, uh, and a critical need to identify funding. So the section part of the second part of the presentation is really going to speak to that. Um, yeah, please. Uh, of course, um, one of the first things that we look at for grant, uh, for funding is, uh, we're actively out seeking grants always, um, constantly looking and making and applying for, uh, federal funding. Um, there's a lot of benefits to federal funding. I'm not going to call it free money because there are people, myself included, who doesn't think it's free. We paid those taxes. We're just routing it back to this community. Um, we've done a good job to try to leverage the funding that we have, uh, it to, um, put it to maximum effect. But we're not going to get every grant application out there. Grants are competitive. We're competing with other jurisdictions for the same pot of money. And oftentimes, um, jurisdictions like ours, Carson City, Reno, Washoe, Lyon, everyone in this region is competing for the same pot of federal funds. And, uh, we also know federal funding is in question at the moment. We're not sure what those grants, the future of those grant programs is going to look like and how much funding will be available. So grants aren't going to be such a great strategy for us potentially moving forward. So in addition to grants, we also need to look at new revenue. So let's talk about new revenue and the potential funding sources there. Oh, before we move off of grants, can we talk about the active grant, uh, applications? I think that's the next slide.
Yes.
So, um, as I mentioned, we're applying for a lot of funding. Uh, right now we have, um, uh, applications out for about ten million dollars worth of projects. Um, that is an estimated match of around two million dollars that we haven't identified funding for in the county. If we are to receive this grants, we'll have to come up with that grant match. Um, we have been pretty competitive with our grant application, so I'm pretty excited about the team and their efforts. Go ahead, Courtney, go ahead.
We were awarded one grant recently. Several of you in the Johnson Lane area would know about it, but it's to construct that basin on the Pamela Place parcel. That was a grant. We, it takes three years to get them, but the first one rolled in. So it's, things are starting to happen.
Yeah, fingers crossed we get more of the applications we have out. Um, but in addition to these projects that we've actively applied for, we still have a large list of unfunded projects, which is our next slide. Sixty-nine million in total. I think the total amount of capital projects identified in the Stormwater Master Plan are actually closer to a hundred and forty-one million. If we were able to fund everything we wanted to accomplish, after looking at these individual drainage areas and prioritizing them, we have a hundred and forty-one million worth of capital projects that we have no funding source for today. All right. So let's talk about the actual budget. Um, so we alluded to the fact that in 2018, the, the previous board took action uh, to transfer one million dollars from the general fund out to create the stormwater program. At that time, um, I remember this meeting very well. The county commission turned to the county manager and said, this is an important pri- uh, priority project. Um, at the end of their budget hearing process, they said, we want you to find a million dollars and transfer this money out. As good as Larry Werner is, and he's a very, very talented county manager, very, very talented engineer, he couldn't just wave a magic wand and find a million dollars, um, in the general fund. So what happened was the county made the conscious decision to dip into reserves and to deficit spend until our revenue sources could catch up and we could find that one million dollars. Um, we are no longer deficit spending today. I'm very proud of that, but we have had to hold the line on that one million dollar transfer out. Uh, this is a reflection of the operating budget for the program. Um, and again, this mostly just covers uh, salaries and services and supplies. You will note it's going up, uh, because in those first couple of years, we were standing the program up. We had to hire the people, purchase the equipment, get the services and supply squared away. Uh, so we were underspending that one million dollars in that stand-up time period, but now today that we have a fully operating program, we are exceeding our one million dollar budget, just in operating costs. Again, we are setting no funding aside for eventual repair and replacement of the assets and no funding aside for the capital projects, the wonderful list of things that we want to accomplish. Uh, today in this last budget, um, we are now at one point three million. If you take this projected trend line moving forward, just based on inflation, costs and the cost of doing business going up over time, we project this budget forward five years. On the next slide, you'll see what happens. We are hugely over expending that one million dollar transfer out. I will tell you from a fiscal standpoint, this is an untenable situation. This is not fiscally sustainable. What this means is once we deplete the reserves in our stormwater fund, there will come a point in time where we either have to identify a new revenue source or we have to cut the services we're providing today. And let me say that again. We have to cut the services we just stood up and are providing today. And I would think most people in this room would agree, that is not, that is a step in the wrong direction. The work that these guys are doing, the football fields of rock, the community center worth of dirt sits where it was, unattended and is not being maintained. That is not a good position for the county to be in. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
On the slide previous for the past, I don't know, six or seven years, if during that period of time was another priority for the Board of Commissioners, roads?
Yes, yes. Good question. Um, absolutely. I think this, uh, the county has identified funding and fiscal sustainability in general as a problem for the county. Um, we have more needs than we have funds. And so at the ta- same time that the Board of County Commissioners was find, trying to find a way to fund stormwater, they were also creating a roads task force and having roads converse, funding conversations. And so that something had to get, they had to pick between stormwater and roads and stormwater got the one million dollar transfer out and they did as much as they could with the existing general fund funding to shift to roads, but that's still not enough. So, um, anyone interested in roads conversation, we had a roads workshop. We'd be happy to talk to you more about that. Uh, so in theory, if we were able to identify a funding source for the stormwater program that is unique to the stormwater program, we could free up the funding for roads, shift it back to the general fund and the board as a, as a matter of policy could decide to allocate that one million to roads. Thank you for the question. At the end of five years, based on this projection, in operating costs alone, and that's just inflation-based salaries, services and supplies, uh, we anticipate the operating costs of this program to be one point five million. So I told you, operating cost is just one piece of the puzzle. There's a lot you need to add to the stormwater budget.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Happening.
There it is. There it is.
My gosh, okay. I don't know why it did like a hundred sites.
Okay. All right, there it is. Um, so if we were to really create a budget for this program and look at realistically what we need to have a fully functional stormwater program and to plan for the things that this community needs, we need to look at more than just operating. And I know the text on the screen is really small to see, so I'm going to talk about each of these categories. This first chunk on the bottom line, oh, I'm walking away, is, uh, in green is the operating cost of the pro-
The blue.
Oh, blue, sorry. Operating cost is the blue on the top. Thank you. I'm like, it's so small, even I can't.
Yeah.
All right. Operating cost is the blue chunk on the top. Um, then you have under that machinery and equipment. So Courtney mentioned that we have purchased a variety of specialized equipment, unique to this program, a vac truck and other things. Uh, that equipment, it needs to be maintained, repaired and replaced, and we should replace it on a schedule. So there's funding that should be set aside for that purpose that we're not doing today. That's that orange smaller bar. It's about seventy thousand dollars a year that we're not putting aside for that purpose. Major repair and replacement. Courtney talked about the infrastructure, the assets in the ground um, that could, you know, some of them are ticking time bombs because we don't have a repair and replacement program for them today. Our current estimate for how much money should be set aside to fund the eventual repair and replacement of that infrastructure is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually that we are not doing. In addition to, uh, get us to closer to accomplishing our goals, um, we would like to set aside funding for capital projects. We mentioned the priorities on our list are changing. They're subject to change in the future, uh, based on new information that we receive, new drainage areas that we're studying. And so this will be an important policy consideration for the board as to what projects you want to see funded. Uh, but hypothetically speaking, we could set aside, uh, one point eight million dollars annually um, as part of the stormwater program, could fund about fourteen million dollars. Um, could be utilized for debt service, uh, fourteen million dollars worth of projects, which would accomplish our top three projects today on the list. Again, important policy decisions, but just for an idea of what the stormwater program budget should look like, this gets us closer to reality. And then the last piece in green, the very bottom bar, is critical land management. We talked about this desire to want to acquire through conservation easements or other mechanisms, critical land that are, um, very important to the future of stormwater. Um, and also we will have to manage this land. So a million dollars a year set aside for this purpose would help us accomplish that goal, both in managing and acquiring those pieces. All right, next slide. So, oh, before I, before I forget, if we can go back, Courtney, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I might add.
So I told you, we're setting aside one million annually in funds. Realistically, we need closer to four million each year to fund this program. So what does that mean for us? What are our funding options? All right.
Am I ready to add something really quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just going back to the critical land management. So as I stated, we have purchased a couple of parcels in the Fish Springs area for flood control projects. Um, houses would be, go on those lots today if we didn't purchase them. And so the, and they would be future clients of mine because they would have drainage problems. Um, and so that line item could identify acquiring parcels for that reason. It could be for a project. It could be to keep open. Um, but you have the funding source there. I just wanted to ex- explain that really quick.
So even though, I, I just want to make sure, uh, I understand it. Even though we've acquired these properties, um, three to be, you know, the Denmark, Red Hawk, and now the Pamela Place on, in Johnson Lane. The only one that's funded is Johnson Lane. The, the Pamela Place, right? And that you said that's a three-year process, but at least we keep building from going on that. But, but, so even though we bought Denmark and Red Hawk, we don't have the money to excavate that to build it into a storm retention basin or detention basin, whichever you want to call. I'm always confused with those two terms. But, um, so that land remains vacant, but it's not going to do any storm mitigation for us until we actually dig into the ground and take that material out, right?
Correct. It is flooding in those locations now, and so it is good that there's not homes. There's not a home being damaged, but correct, we don't have the funding to actually build the infrastructure.
All right. So there are a variety of funding strategies that we can explore. Um, and the way we landed on these funding strategies is we looked at what national best practices are, what others are doing to solve stormwater problems. Um, and so these are reoccurring themes. These are not, we're not reinventing the wheel here and some of these themes have popped up when Courtney went through our history in discussing stormwater matters as a community. We have talked about some of these things. Um, so they're not new to us. Uh, the first on the list is a stormwater infrastructure and quitter, critical land utility fee. Um, and we'll talk about, uh, what others are doing there. The next on the list is a quarter cent sales tax increase for stormwater infrastructure. We'll talk about what that might look like. Um, we've also talked about the creation of special assessment districts. And then the last option is status quo to do nothing. And that is what this community has been doing for some time, that we continue to allocate one million dollars, which we know is not nearly sufficient. And we understand that that means cuts in services at some point, making hard decisions as a county commission if we do nothing.
I, you know, uh, not to interrupt, but I would suggest there's a fifth one that we haven't talked about. And that is, and that's not, it, not something I'm advocating for. So don't, don't take me wrong in this, okay? But, um, we did take one point one million, uh, now one point three million that could otherwise be used for roads and created this division. We could turn, return that money back to the general fund for, for roads and eliminate the division. I'm not advocating for that, but there is a fifth one.
Yeah, Jason's coming to storm out.
I, so please, don't misunderstand me. Don't misunderstand me, okay? But, I mean, right? I mean, I, I don't, I don't see that as an option, but I mean, that's, that's the danger we have here in, in my mind. The danger we have is if we don't do something, then we, our, our general fund and our, uh, current assess, uh, the current amount that we're putting in is not gonna, is not going to solve this issue. That's, I, I guess that's my point. Okay, so.
Fair point.
Please, uh, don't misunderstand, okay? And, uh, that's on the record. Please do not misunderstand.
All right. So the first one on the list we're going to talk about is a stormwater utility fee. Um, so at least two thousand one hundred identified communities in forty-two states have a stormwater utility fee. The national average for a stormwater utility fee is six dollars, six dollars and six cents a month. And the highest identified monthly, uh, fee in the nation is forty-five dollars a month, just to give you some context. Uh, there's a variety of ways you can set up a stormwater utility. Um, people have used a simple per parcel. Some have used, um, a, uh, equivalent residential unit, which I will have Courtney very briefly explain what that is.
Yeah, another acronym coming at you, ERU, Equivalent Residential Unit. So, um, my house would be one, Walmart might be five hundred. It depends on the amount of water that is generated from your property. So your impervious surface is where water can't infiltrate. So your roof, your driveway, your concrete patio. Um, so one house equals one and a Walmart, which has a lot more covered area, parking lot, big building, might be a lot more. Um, and so that's what that term means.
So each one of those owners would pay their proportionate share of the utility based on however many units are attributed to them, if that makes sense. We're not necessarily advocating for one way or another. Utility fees would require, in order to set one up, um, a utility up would require multiple public meetings, a very engaging public process. Um, and there is an art to rate making, to make sure that you end up on the right number to ensure that you're not taking in too much revenue from the public, overburdening them, but that it covers your costs sufficiently to make sure that the utility is fiscally sustainable moving forward.
I, I had a couple of questions on that. Are each home considered equal?
No.
So it depends. Uh, actually I'll move into the next.
Yeah.
Slide. So.
That's one question and, and, and another one that you can answer, however you, that they come up, is, uh, what did, how much would your cost? Well, how much would this cost have to be to satisfy the needs that you posted earlier?
We'll get there. Yes, we'll get there too. So, so it depends. And, um, I think that at some point we want to get to the point of, do we want to do this? And if we say, yes, we do, we will work out all of those details at that time. There's a lot of different ways to set it up. I have an example up here for Carson City. They're right next to us. They set one up, well, Juan's here, two thousand two. They started, uh, funding a stormwater utility. And so just for an example, I put up here what they charge. Uh, it, and oops, ah, I hit the wrong button. Dang it. Oh my gosh. I know, we do. I, um, sorry. See, I'm like out of my zone here. Okay. Sorry, guys.
While she finds it, I'll let you guys know. So Carson City has set up, um, categories based on square foot of homes. And so, uh, they have one, um, uh, category for, um, Carson City residential. It's one story, sixteen hundred square feet, two stories, twenty-four hundred square feet, pays seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um, and then it, it inclines from there based on the bigger your house, the more you're paying. Um, with the biggest, uh, houses, um, one story of two thousand four hundred square feet, two story of thirty-six hundred square feet, paying as much as fifteen, uh, thirty-eight per month.
Yes, which is more than the national average, but it is a great example. They have been able to accomplish a lot uh, with that program as, as Karen had stated in her public comment. She's the stormwater manager for Carson City and they have been able to build a lot of projects with that funding.
Um, so applying potentially what Carson City has done using an ERU approach, we estimate the. we estimate the total number of ERUs in Douglas County to be around 56,000. And if you take that and times it by these different increments here, um, that gets you to where you're going. So to answer your question directly, Commissioner Tarkanian, I told you that I anticipated, we estimate that the needs for this program are around 4 million dollars today. So at $6 per month, we could generate the 4 million dollars needed if from a, a stormwater utility fee if we decided the ERU approach was the appropriate methodology to apply to this community. That is a policy decision for the board. Um, when we spoke about stormwater utilities in the past, there have been a lot of questions from the public about whether or not this should apply to the school district, fire district, ag community, if there should be subsidies and, and those things created, fees waived. Um, that's all important policy conversations for the county commission. Uh, that would be done at multiple public meetings before we got to the stormwater utility. Um, and we would explore all of that.
All right, so. Um, I'm just going to clarify really quick. This 56,917, this has nothing to do with the population. This has to do with the number of equivalent residential units. So one house, one unit, one Walmart, I don't know, 500 units, I don't know. Starbucks, a lot. Um, and so it's an estimation of what we currently have, just to clarify that, it's not population related.
We're, we're at what, about 20, somewhere uh just under 25,000 residential units in the county?
That sounds about right. I thought it was 23 based on the last census.
Single family, it says 20,000. And then uh multifamily is combined with commercial, so it's hard to separate those out, but.
Okay, all right. Um, the next slide we're going to go to is the quarter cent sales tax. Um, and so the uh state does allow the county to create a quarter cent sales tax for infrastructure. Um, and also for the purposes of taxes for development of open space and land. Other jurisdictions have done this, and we'll talk about who has done what on a, on another slide. Um, we estimate on average about uh 25% of sales tax is paid by visitors in Douglas County, and we base that on a sampling of credit card sales that's shared with us by the visitors um authority. So if anyone has a question about how we arrived on that, so about 25% of the sales tax that we collected is, or collect in Douglas County is contributed by our visitors. This is, this next slide is.
Are you going to talk about the, the NRS 376A?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry. So I told you we could create, we could collect it for infrastructure, but we can also collect it for development of open space land. Um, so Carson Churchill, Clark, Elko, Lander, Lincoln, Lyon, Pershing, Story, Washo, and White Pine all have created a quarter cent sales tax uh for infrastructure.
So, yeah.
That is.
Development of open, you better say what development of open space. It does not mean develop.
The creation, the creation is a better word, right? The creation, okay, not, not development of.
Yes. Um, the way that the law is worded, it's, does exactly say development, but that's not what the law means. It's to preserve open space. Um, so Car, so Carson Churchill, Clark, Elko, Lander, Lincoln, Lyon, Story, Washo, and White Pine, 10, all have quarter cent sales tax for infrastructure. Um, I do not know of anyone who has created quarter cent sales tax for open space. Off topic.
Carson City.
Carson City is the only one, okay.
It's the only one that I know of.
Okay. Um, this is a map of sales tax um percentages across the state of Nevada. Um, and you can look and see what others have set their sales tax um compared to Douglas County. Uh, for example, let's call out um Carson, uh, because they're right next to us, and they are one that has that quarter cent sales tax in place for infrastructure. Um, compared to us, we're at 7.1 and Carson is at 7.6% for sales tax. All right, this is a further breakdown of each of the jurisdictions and those that have chosen to implement additional sales tax um percentages above those which the state has set as the minimum. And so it has, it outlines for each of those jurisdictions what they have chosen to impose on themselves, the rate and the purpose and the section of the statute. Um, so Carson City at the top, we mentioned the infrastructure Churchill also. I won't repeat myself, you get what I'm looking, uh, what I'm mentioning, but this is just a look at our neighboring jurisdictions.
So what the miscellaneous facilities and services, is that like for the community centers and things like that?
So I think that's actually PALS. So it's our PALS tax that was created. Um, and so PALS, the acronym is our um parks, airport, library, and seniors. Yes, thank you. And that was created through a voter initiative.
In 1999.
In 1999, yes. Okay, thank you. All right, um, so what would a quarter cent sales tax generate? And does it get us past the finish line? We estimate based on what we currently take in for a quarter cent sales tax for PALS, that a quarter cent sales tax would generate about 2.99 million. So the reality of doing a tax increase means that we're not going to get to the 4 million dollars that we need to fully fund this program. It means that if we were to select only this as an option, that we would likely have to continue the general fund transfer out of 1 million dollars to this program to ensure it is sustainable moving forward. And that may or may not be a good choice for the board. It will be a policy discussion for the board to decide whether or not that's the best way you want to proceed.
Can I explain this one?
Yep, please.
Uh, special assessment districts are another option. Um, basically it, it takes, this area is being impacted, this project fixes the issue for that area. We're going to assess this area for this project. Um, and so I've, I've given a lot of thought as to would that work or not? You could say, okay, we're going to put Johnson Lane in one area, and we're going to put Fish Springs in one area, and we're going to put Buckeye Creek in one area and Rune Strath in one area. Well, I, as I explained earlier, that doesn't work because of the irrigation network that we have. All of those watersheds intercept that, and they eventually all flow to the north and end up in Johnson Lane trying to get to the river. So it's really challenging to separate out what those district bounty, boundaries would be in terms of who benefits from each project. And so special assessment districts is not, not an easy thing for us to do here.
Special assessment districts make a lot of sense when the infrastructure you're installing specifically serves only that, that area. It becomes more challenging when you have an interrelated, interdependent flood network such as ours. You cannot tell water to not move from this area to this area and never the two shall cross. That's not how water works. We all know that. Okay. All right, so staff feel very strongly that a special assessment district would be challenging here and would not work for the reasons that we stated. So we have narrowed down the funding options to, if we choose to look at a new revenue source, to utility fee versus sales tax. And there's pros and cons to both. Residents under a utility fee would be estimated to pay $72 annually if we use the national average of $6 per month. The rate can be adjusted based on the needs of the program um, and the increasing expenses of the program, but the rate will be designed to cover the cost. And the rate would be the subject of public meetings before it were changed. So if there were a need to create, if we decided to create the utility, the public would be able to weigh in on the impact of a utility fee before the board cha, uh, voted to change it. There are many ways to structure a utility fee. I told you rate making is an art, and there's a lot of policy considerations for the county commission that will help us get to this fee. For example, a question could be, how much critical land does the board want to see us acquire? And in what areas? What capital projects do we think we need to accomplish and want to cover in this rate window? Usually a rate is adopted for a period of time and adjusted as needed. So a three to five year window, we would be able to know what our utility fee was going to be. Uh, and we would also look at five year projections moving forward.
I just have one other question before you moved on from there. The lake area, you're trying to use it to clear, make the lakes clear. Is some of this money you're talking about, the 4 million a year being used for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and so a good question might be, we don't have to just create one utility. We could look at multiple, but I would also tell you staff's recommendation based on um past history for this county, there was a point in time where we had 13 different water utilities with 13 different rates. And so we don't recommend that. We'd like to see it all be one consolidated utility for both the lake and the valley. We think that makes the most sense. All right, on the sales tax side of the house, um, a quarter cent sales tax uh we estimate would generate about 2.9 million annually. I told you that doesn't get us to the finish line, so we would have to continue to do a general fund transfer out to cover the full cost of this program. We mentioned that visitors pay a share of sales tax, so that's um potentially a positive thing. Uh, revenue, sales tax revenue is heavily impacted by the economy. And so there would be some volatility, volatility in this revenue source. Um, we might make, might have to make uh decisions regarding cruts to the program based on what we're seeing going on in the economy, so keep that in mind. And I mentioned 2.9 is not sufficient to cover. So um, those are the options that we feel we have narrowed it down to, and uh, we're happy to answer any questions that the board has, and also the public will have an opportunity to give public comment and ask questions here in just a little bit. Um, so second to last slide, he takeaways, we have budget challenges. Uh, we have a flat budget right now. We're currently allocating 1 million. It's not enough. Uh, and we have some really important goals that we hope to accomplish in the future. Our community has been talking about stormwater for a long time. We are looking forward very much to talking about solutions. Costs are increasing, program needs are increasing. We are not setting aside sufficient funding for the future, and our current situation is not fiscally sustainable. And with that, unless Courtney has any other closing comments.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, um, I just have a couple. This last slide was put together by Katie Hay. Thank you, Katie. Um, like I said, there's a lot of archives out there to uh, to document flooding that's happened. And this slide basically is headlines of uh historical floods uh with the year associated with it. And you can see that um it's been going on for a long time. Uh, I think our last headline will be sometime around the 2023 timeframe um, or 2024, when we adopted the Stormwater Master Plan. I just wonder, what's our next headline? Another flood event's coming. I'm just going to leave that right there for now. I think at this point we're good for questions from the board.
What I'd like to do is go to the board now for very brief discussion or question. Obviously, if we choose to move forward with anything, we'll have another agenda item to go more into depth then. But I'd like to get through the board comment quickly so we can get to public comment. So maybe take a minute or two each, if you have comments or questions. Commissioner Tolbert?
I assume you're starting with me down here at the end. So I have, I don't know that they're necessarily questions, but concerns. Um, and the first thing I have is, is that I very much believe that stormwater and roads should possibly be together, um, because a lot of it works side by side, uh, especially in our rural areas where the roadway ditches are the, are, are our storm. Um, well, storm drains. So both of those happen at the same time, so we don't have roads that are accommodating that. We also don't have the storm drain, so I, I feel like that's something that should maybe be addressed in that in what we do, it should maybe incorporate the two together. Um, not to say combining the, you know, the, the departments or anything, but something that they, they need to be thought of together, not addressed individually, I don't think. Maybe some things are individual, but they still need to be able to work uh together. And the other thing is um, we, we've mentioned, you, you mentioned that the uh, the ditches, the irrigation ditches, the uh, those are already maintained um by the ditch districts to, to some extent, and they're, and they're run for the benefit um of our ranching community. And so those, they, they've already been doing the initial work of what flood control was for a long time. And now it just seems like with approaching, everything encroaching, that it's exceeded the capacity of what those ditches can, can maintain, um, because we put houses in those areas now that they're being affected. So um, I, I feel like whatever we do has to acknowledge that because they're already doing the work, and, and there's got to be some collaboration, I think, with um, the agents, the ditch agencies too. Um, because like I said, they're already maintaining that infrastructure to some extent. So um, those are just quick concerns that I have thinking forward about what, you know, obstacles there might be and what, and how these things need to move forward.
I, I had asked my questions uh during this presentation, so I'm fine.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, I, I wrote a whole page of uh comments, but I'll, I'll try to um make a synopsis here. Um, we have recognized uh, uh, earlier this year, uh, the, the lack of funds to maintain our roads in, in proper conditions. And um, storms, uh, as we've seen, uh, do nothing but destroy our roads and other infrastructure. Um, so um, we need to do something about that. I know that uh, the board previously, uh, a, a couple of years ago, 2018, when they set up this division, uh, dedicated 1.1 million dollars uh out of the, out of the roads. And um, and I, I salute that action, uh, but certainly it wasn't enough to, to correct the issues that, that need to be corrected. Um, uh, as I see it, we're, and I understand we're somewhere in the four to five million dollar range um, in deficiency in our road maintenance process. Um, so um, I recognize the, the, the 1.3 million now that we're spending on this program. Uh, the, the 2 million that we've been setting aside for the last five years in recognition of the uh pending need to have Mueller built at that. Um, now that we have that money in the bank and, and uh, um, and, and the road is being built. Uh, hopefully then we can shortly, uh, in the very near future, uh, redirect that money into the roads, uh, other roads that need to be built. And um, and so uh, that's, that's good. Um, that'll help us cure that shortfall that we have in our roads uh, that are, are important to us to do. So once again, I, I salute the, the board for making that tough decision back in 2018 to create this division. But uh, at the same point in time, uh, taking it first out of reserves and now out of our roads, um, hasn't recognized the, the need for um, the continuing cost of, of preparing for that infrastructure. Um, so uh, when I was, um, I've always been an individual that um looks for solutions uh to problems uh when confronted with that. And uh, uh, it's almost like uh, if we don't do anything, it's, it's, if we don't pay me now, uh, we're going to be paying for it later uh with additional destruction of our infrastructure that, that won't be acceptable and um will put our public safety at great risk in my minds. Um, so I see uh stormwater roads as Commissioner Tolbert has pointed out, stormwater and roads are, are absolutely uh integral and, and uh need to be addressed. Um, uh, and I would suggest the preservation of critical, open, uh, undeveloped lands uh that can remain that way and uh accommodate the stormwater and recharge our aquifer is extremely important uh to us. Um, I would suggest that we're probably the richest county in the state when it comes to water. And no other county can match us with water, uh, and the availability of water. Um, but that also creates uh tremendous problems when we enter these storm issues. And, and as you pointed out, since 1872 to current, uh, it's, it's, this has been a problem in the county for, for uh not only decades, but it's centuries, basically. Um, and, and we need to, we need to solve it. Um, I see the two options that basically have been given to us. Um, uh, I know that um, uh, one of those options, um, the quarter cent sales tax really expires uh in September of 2029. There's no guarantees that the governor is going to, uh, or the state legislature, even after a vote of this populace is going to approve that, yes.
Um, so that's for the, the open.
That's, that's the open space. That's, that's the open space individually. Individually, I realize that. So yes, I'm aware of that, yes. And the only reason that, and Carson City, by the way, is exempt from that, because they had their program in place before that, and, and so they're exempted from that. But anyways, I'm anxious to hear from the public and see if we have any additional options that they might, might see that are viable. But I'm not one to, you know, many, many boards have approached this, as you've seen with the slides, and kicked the can down the road, and I'm not willing, and no pun intended, I'm not interested in kicking the can down the road. I want to, I want to find a solution to this issue. Thank you.
Some super quick comments. I want to note that the modeling capacities that we have right now to understand where the model, where the water goes during floods, we did not have 10, 15, 20 years ago. And, and that is one explanation for why we are where we are. I want to note the public comment we got from Gretchen and Philip, don't know how to say the last name, Gogran, maybe? They are not in favor of conflating conservation easements with stormwater management if the end result is mechanically altered flood basins in the pristine farmland that we love to see. And I think that was a really good point, and I would agree with that point. I want to, I also agree, roads, stormwater, they're like this, both in funding and also potentially in certain implementation aspects. So I think that's a really good point. I want to be cognizant of the cost to implement whatever solution we have. I don't want to take a big chunk of the funds to implement getting the funds. And I don't know what the answers to that are, but it's on my mind. And the last thing I want to say is, the stormwater department has earned my trust. With that, let's turn to public comment. And thank you so much for being patient all this time, and we welcome your thoughts.
My name is Tom Halton. I live in the Johnson Lane area. I don't want to be negative about any one department, but I do want to give you a little history lesson. So how many stormwater drainage projects were completed in the Johnson Lane area in the last 20 years when the road department handled drainage? None. Historically, the road department actions made the problems worse by overcutting drainage ditches and forcing water the wrong way in favor of developers, not homeowners. Skyline Ranch is a great example of that. Prior to 2016, I don't know of one drainage project that helped mitigate any drainage issues, not one. Once the stormwater drainage group was formed, including Courtney Walker and Jason Samansky, there has been significant improvement in our area. I believe improvement that is proactive for the entire county. Let's not go backwards, which will only create liability and ultimately litigation for the county and the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. St. John, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, Madam Manager, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan St. John, and I'm speaking here as a private citizen, not as an appointee of this, of this commission. As I think you'll remember from previous comments, my background is Public Works and Utilities Management, much of it right here in northern Nevada. I was, I enjoyed hearing the comments about the Carson City program. I was there in 98 and 2000, and one of the jobs the city manager gave me was starting a stormwater citizens advisory committee, which I promptly delegated to Moody Azad, who was a dear friend, and I miss him dearly. Also was involved in the Truckee River Flood Management Program during my stint at Washoe County. So this is a subject that's close to my professional background. And all the things I've learned, now that I realize how close I am to Pine, Pine Nut Creek, and the dip sections that you showed there, now, now I have a personal interest in this too. So although I'm, I think I'm out of the flood area. Anyways, I did want to congratulate this commission and staff on the work that you have done, the progress that you've made, as echoed by the chair just a moment ago. We have some solid plans now, and I've looked at a lot of them. Thank you, Courtney, for sending me the connections there. And these are, these are solid plans based on thorough analysis. I mean, that go back historically, looking at things that have changed, and things change. We're growing, we're not, you know, we're not growing super fast, but you know, the county develops, that's a change. I think Courtney pointed out, there were alluvial floods for a long time before the area was settled that nobody cared about, because they weren't there. Now we're there. Anyways, I want to congratulate you for the work you've done, the partnerships that you've had with the Carson River Subconservancy on some of these analyses, I think with the Corps of Engineers on funding and so forth and so on. And that's great. You've made a great, excellent argument for additional revenue. Anybody who's been in business, been in, run government agencies, had to provide services, one thing for sure, prices go up. You know, we need more revenue to do the same job. And you've made a great case that the existing revenue will not continue to do the same job. And, you know, any of us who are responsible business-minded people know that we have to do something about revenue. I don't think there's a question about cutting costs, there's a question, it just takes more. Anyways, I would just, I do want to echo Commissioner Tolbert's comment about the relationship between stormwater and roads. I absolutely agree with you. You know, you can't look at stormwater without looking at its impact on your transportation systems. And I like the thinking that we're even having today about, well, if we do this here, maybe we can help on the roads on the other side. And goodness knows, we know that road maintenance needs help in this county. I'll try to wrap it up here quick. I'm not so sure that it's an either or proposition. I mean, as a citizen who understands the issue, who is, you know, has looked at the technical material, county may need both. And I'm not suggesting, for the, you know, for the sake of staff, that you try to accomplish both a stormwater utility and a quarter cent sales tax at the same time. But, you know, as we look down the road and realize how much it's going to cost us to maintain our stormwater and transportation systems, we need revenue.
Thank you, Mr. St. John.
So I, I support additional revenue.
The 30 second, I don't know what happened.
Maybe I'll just announce 30 seconds.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff. My name is John Coburn. I'm retired not too long ago from University of Nevada Reno Cooperative Extension. While I was there, I was a water resource specialist. I'm trained as a hydrologist. And a lot of the work that I did was right here in the Carson River watershed. Helped found the Carson River Coalition, worked with Ed James and the Carson Water Subconservance District to get a lot of education done, and our top priority, and that, and still is in that coalition, flood plan management. I wrote my first publication on Douglas County flooding in 1995, and I was, I was witness to the early Johnson Lane floods in the early 1990s. And in all those years, we've been looking for ways that the community can be protected from the dangers of flooding. And since we live in a valley with, with mountains, somewhat arid mountains around us, but we have, we're subject to these intense thunderstorms. We get flash flooding on our alluvial fans, and alluvial fans come down from the mountains, and they're convex surfaces, so it might come out of the canyon and go right or left. So basins and situations like that are, you know, capital improvement projects are needed. The Carson River, I was here for the 1997 flood, there was one fatality, a lot of property damage in that flood. And we know from, there's a lot of evidence that shows that we're likely to see bigger, more intense storms, both winter and summer storms in the future. So I'm very pleased to see that the county has gone on, first in 2018, to form the Stormwater Division, and then in 2024 to pass the Stormwater Master Plan. Those are wonderful steps. But just having a good plan, while it's wonderful, we need to fund it. There are, and then having specific, very detailed studies done of the various danger points around the county, such as Johnson Lane, Ruins Throth, Pine Nut Creek, Fish Springs, and others. We know that those capital improvement projects, we know where they need to go, we get estimates about how much they're going to cost.
30 seconds.
But with no way to fund them, we're, we won't be able to protect people. This question?
30 seconds. I guess I'll just end by, and I have, after the 2014 flood, I took a lot of photographs around the Johnson Lane from, after that flash flood. And luckily, on the west side of Hot Springs Mountain, there weren't any houses along Vicki Road, but the boulders that came down from one of those small washes were in some places three feet in diameter. I have photographs of them where they rolled down from, from the upper part of the mountain with huge amount of water pushing them down. And at the, when they came to rest, they're sitting on top of shrubs. So it's incontrovertible evidence that, that those types of boulders, had there been homes there, could have, could have taken people's lives as well. So this is serious business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn.
Thanks for this opportunity to speak, Charles Heffernan, Johnson Lane. I love to see this. This is great. County staff has put together a great presentation, but also a good plan. And I think that it's something that, it's got a, it's going to be a long haul, but I think it's something the Commissioners should take up now, because it's going to take a long time to actually get this implemented, even longer to get the plans drawn up for those improvements that need to be done. And I agree with Commissioner Tolbert, this is, you know, I think the roads, absolutely, and others have made that same comment, that roads have to be considered at the same I would say that as far as the utility fee, it just seems to me that it ought to be done by watershed. The Tahoe watershed, the Main Valley watershed, and the Topaz State watersheds all have different characteristics, different costs. And so I think we ought to really consider that. I know it's going to be a lot of meetings and things like that, that'll be, you'll be looking at it, but I don't think we should discard that right away. At least those three, you know, should be, should be done. I think that, you know, and the kids, the kids should pay their own way. I don't know, I heard tonight that, this afternoon, there was, there was money sent to Topaz Estates to satisfy a problem that they had. Hopefully, they can establish some reserves that could cover that in the future. And I would, I would just say one more thing, and that is that this is going to take a lot of commitment, political courage on the part of the commission. This is not going to be easy. People don't want to pay taxes, they don't want to pay extra for things, and it's going to, but it's going to take some, some education, more than just a room like this, going to take education, people going out and advocating for this and saying, this is what, if we don't do this, this is what's going to happen. And people who've been in the valley a long time have seen this. So it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of political courage, and I, I admire you for that in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heffernan. Welcome, Mr. Guzman.
Can you turn the microphone back on, please?
Is that the way? Thank you. I'm Juan Guzman, I'm a resident of the county. I have work as a planner and also as a manager of an open space program in Carson City. I want to applaud the board effort to attack, attack this problem. And I want to remind you, just like the person before me, that is going to get tough. And what I mean by that is that people forget that flooding, it happens, you know, every so often, but when it happens, it's so catastrophic. And then there goes years when the problem is minimal. So people tend to forget that and live with it until the next disaster. So again, it requires a lot of will and perseverance to, to create a program. So I applaud that effort. Also, I wanted to, to talk about flooding as a regional problem. It's something that is very difficult to, to try to alleviate or amenable it on a case by case basis, on a small increment basis. So please, keep the leadership going and assume that you, it's your problem, and you should be able to, to manage it, to try to manage it the best, to the best of your ability. Regarding the funding supports, all I want to say is I support staff research. They did an incredible amount of really good, they brought you really good information about what other counties are doing. And whatever the case may be, I hope you reached the right decision. And thank you so much for your time, for listening.
Next, we welcome you. Come on up.
Hello, my name is John Lang. I'm in the Genoa area. I believe it was about two years ago is when I met Ms. Walker, it was over at the Senior Center, went over the entire plans of, she kind of got all the ranchers together, started going over ideas. And just, what was it, last year on the Waterloo Lane, that's considered the cottonwood slough there, which directly affects numerous other ranches downstream. I was in the ditch with those guys back there, so I wanted to give them a shout out. They were able to supply us the water for agricultural use to continue what ranchers are doing in this community. The reason I'm here today is obviously, number one, to commend them for the great work that they do. However, it seems like a common trend across all the county commissioners is, you guys are also going to need the buy-in from the ranchers. Everything falls to the ranchers as far as, as you guys see up there, that's all the land that the water flows onto. I believe Mr. Tolbert made a comment as far as the ditches and the ditch companies and the water that flows to them. That is correct. The ranchers, single-handedly, do put up their own money and their own investments as far as keeping those ditches lively. Where it does come into effect, like we see on Waterloo, is when a pipe is engineered and that pipe is supposed to carry, let's say, I believe it was spec'd out to 25 to 30 feet of water a second. Problem with that is, is historically, the cottonwood slough would hold upwards of 100 feet of water. When we're talking 100 feet of water, that is a lot of water to flow through the city, get it to places to ensure that the rest of the community is safe. And then lastly, as far as the record go, I'm sure you guys have heard this numerous times, but anytime that ditches within this community or within the county are, I guess, worked on, or any infrastructure that's going on, the United States Water Master's Office, who was here in attendance earlier, does- who was here in attendance earlier, does or should be a part of that. And the reason for that is the case law of the Alpine decree that came down in 1980. So all ditches, all systems, all water flow should be a part of that. If not, as it's been stated before, litigation can happen, causing a court order to come down from the feds and causing the county a whole bunch more undue burden and money. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Mr. Curtis.
This is all very good. First of all, I want to want to thank Courtney and her crew for coming to my backyard.
We need your name for the record, though, Bernie.
Well, you know it, Mark, it's Bernie Curtis. But the bottom line is you got to get buy in from everybody. And that's bond elections and those kind of things haven't gone very well here. And so you've got to go through a series of meetings like the one we've gone to today and shorten the process, the the program up so that it's easily understandable. When you run for political office, they tell you, talk in fifth grade lingo. So if you haven't got that, don't run for office. But what I'm telling you is you've got to get a lot of buy in. And it's not there yet. The folks that don't have a drainage in their backyard or front yard are not going to support this because it's somebody else's problem. That you can overcome, but it's going to take a lot of effort. So that's, and I'm not talking about the the good work that stormwater crew does because they do a very fine job as far as I'm concerned. And I've got Pine Nut Creek in my yard. So anyway, thank you very much. I guess I should sign in.
Yes. While he's signing in, is there anyone else that would like to come up? Ms. Muzzy, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for this presentation. I think it is very informative and very.
Oh, state your name, sorry.
Jan Muzzy, I'm sorry, I thought I said that. Anyway, I thought this presentation was very, very informative for the that and should be heard by by the public. But all of us that are here, and I think I can honestly say this, is that we are in agreement that something needs to be done about stormwater and our roads and our open space. And I would suggest that each of us here should be points of information and advocate to the public in this regard of this presentation. So I think we need to speak to the public. And as the gentleman before me was talking about getting the buyout, buy up of the public, we should be out there advocating this and getting out there and speaking to the public. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It's a call to arms, everyone, just spread the word. Thank you, thank you.
While I was sitting and listening to the different points of view, Alice Gingrich, I'm signed in here. Not everybody in our county is affected by the stormwater. And so, of course, they don't want to buy into the program. But like Nathan said, everybody's affected by the roads. And everybody wants to maintain our beautiful open spaces. So I think we should be looking maybe to consolidate those things under one heading. And I don't think that, like the other gentleman said, we shouldn't discount not implementing both of the programs to raise the funds. When you look at our tax rates compared, the sales tax rates and even the utility rates and whatever, from a lot of our people who are moving here from California to escape those rates, we don't come close. And we have something much better to offer here. We have a beautiful way of life, so if we're going to maintain it, we got to dig in our pockets and look, look for ways to fund it. And the only people that are going to fund it are Douglas, are the Douglas County residents and the people who come to visit and the people who want to be here too. So that's my piece.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ritchie.
My name's Doug Ritchie. I live in Douglas County. There's been talk about, well, it doesn't affect me. And so that you were going to get buy in from the community. Here's the thing is I've raised my family here. This is a wonderful community and we are a community. And I hate to tell you, but if you look at that map up there and you see some of the flooding that's occurred in the history, we are all going to be flood victims. But even for lesser, even for the smaller floods that are just regional, Mr. Hall brought up that the county has not performed any stormwater projects for decades. The projects that the county has recently constructed were the result of litigation. That doesn't seem like a very efficient way to carry out stormwater. But even if you believe that, guess what? In the end of the day, every person that pays taxes in this county is paying for stormwater one way or another. And so, again, the reason I got up is because we are one community and to say, well, I don't get flooded. Well, I've seen the pictures, a lot, maybe you're up on the hill and you won't get flooded. But at the end of the day, we're one community and we're one tax base and your tax dollars are going to help pay for these problems. The other thing I wanted to bring up is I've I've been here long enough to have seen this issue keep coming up. One of the issues that has been raised is, well, this is a tax, this is another tax versus utility fee. A water bill is for a service, it's not a tax. Vice Chair Gardner noted that one option is to not fund stormwater. In other words, let nature take its course. That's how it's always been. The water comes, alluvial fans especially, people are going to flood it out and that's just, that's how it is. The danger of flooding is that it damages structures that are the result of development. If there were no development, there would be no need for a stormstormwater program to protect homes and businesses. But because there has been development, shouldn't the cost be borne by an ERU, as they discussed? Basically, where there's structures and impervious services? In other words, where man has changed nature? If you don't want to pay a stormwater fee, then be a rancher and leave it as open space. But the fact is, is that we do have development here. We have businesses, we have schools, we have a community. And to the extent that we can, we should support one another as neighbors. Because someday, there will be a storm. And someday, it may be a really bad storm. And wouldn't it be nice if we figured out today what the best way is to address that problem? Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any other public comment. Last chance, we welcome you if you want to comment. Oh, I don't, we can't have two. Sorry. We'll chat after. Yes. Okay, anyone else? Okay, public comment is closed then. All right, then bringing it back to the board, I, I know we're not ready to make a decision, but would you have an interest in giving some comments in terms of direction?
Madam Chair, if I may help, I will just let you know, we're happy to bring these items back for presentation. So we've done a roads workshop, we've now done a stormwater workshop. We are going to talk to you about the fiscal state of the county and we're going to talk about all of these things. The county has a past practice of addressing one problem at a time. And I think what I heard tonight as a member of staff is these problems are interrelated. And perhaps a solution is to talk about them all at once. So we will bring something back to the county commission to discuss this matter further and also in the context of the overall fiscal health of this organization. I think that would be good. And we'd encourage the individuals in attendance tonight to please stay tuned, please continue to engage in these conversations and bring your neighbor to our next meeting. We would love to see them here. Thanks.
The one thing that from my experience, and even last week when we had that meeting about stormwater, I think one of the things that we haven't necessarily talked about too is that a lot of the capital improvement projects that we go out and seek, we're seeking grant funding for. And the fact that we have to provide 20% match on most of these as a typical number is not something we've talked about and addressing is that we need to figure out somehow in our funding mechanism to keep 20% cash on these projects that we want to do. And I'm not sure what that answer is, was not something that I've heard us mention. So I want to, when we talk about that, you know, I know we've had our grant writing and we have people on staff now, but that's something that, you know, we, you know, and the one that we were talking about, they're like, you guys are perfect, you're going to, you checked every box, but you don't have $2 million in cash for this $10 million grant. So we're not going to get it, even though we check every box, unless we figure out a way to make that happen. So that's something else that we need to be keeping in mind in in funding is having that ability to have matching funds available. So just one more thing to throw in the fire.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Hurricane, anything else? Commissioner Gardner?
The, you know, this has has been indicated by the public and I don't disagree at all. This is going to take a lot more community outreach and and showing this this presentation may be in an abbreviated form at town hall meetings throughout our county, maybe in each commissioner district might be appropriate. I know that as a resident of Topaz Ranch Estates, I think it's going to be important for me to to display this to an abbreviated forum in that forum. You know, hopefully, we can get more people to attend. You know, that's, that's, that's critical because it is a important subject that we need to, we need to try to develop an answer to. So, thank you.
I agree. And I appreciate you bringing that next step, the describing the next step. And I believe we're all in support of that next step. All right. With that, we will end this agenda item and open general public comment. Seeing none, I will close general public comment and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.